Welcome back to our channel. Please be reminded that this video does not reflect on any opinion from the DC team and is only published for information purposes. Video courtesy of Sangguniang Panglungsod of Dumaguete City Facebook page. Dumaguete City Councilors deliberated on the 174-hectare or smart city reclamation project with a privileged speech given by Attorney Golda Benjamin. This was discussed during the 97th regular session of the 31st City Council on July 21, 2021. Take note that there are a few in-video interruptions which we are not responsible for. However, this does not affect the overall stream from the City Hall. Please check our video description for the timestamp of individual speeches.
There being none, then our guest speaker for privileged hour is allowed to speak for a maximum of 30 minutes. Go ahead ma'am.
Mayong bundag ka na tumpenan, Madam Chair, Honorable Counselors. Honorable Counselors of the City Council of Dumaguete, daghang salamat. I feel very privileged not only to be given 15 minutes but more to present today before you today. My presentation today, I'm going to limit it to the law. Ako si Golda Benjamin, uso akong abugado. Lumulupyo ako sa Dumaguete, diri ko nagtubo. Ang among mga silingan, mga mangingisda pod sa loo. Maghatod sila ug isda namo. Maunang nagporsigido ko nga mo isturya ninyo today. Pero dili ko mag-isturya kabahin sa science o engineering, kaya dili man na ako training. Ang akong training, abugado, so akong ilimit ang akong intervention today on the law. First slide please. So the outline of my presentation, ang title lang sa akong presentation, "Common Sense vs. Corruption." And today's topic, next slide, I'll start by discussing ang among analysis kung unsa gituin nyuhang gibutaran, JVA ba or memorandum of agreement. Ang sunod na topic nga akong i-discuss is a brief discussion on the law of unsolicited proposal 101. Nakue gamay ang nahibal anani, Madam Chair and Honorable Counselors, kay dugay mapukon nagtrabaho sa Senado as one of the lawyers of the Blue Ribbon Committee na didto mapod mag-isturya kabahin sa mga problema sa procurement sa gobyerno. So maupod ang akong background. Ang sunod na akong isturya, kabahin o public consultations. And of course, I'm going to talk about Corrupt Practices Act. And this is under the law and based on what we have so far. Next slide. Kami, Madam Chair, I come here also bringing the voice of thousands of Dumaguete people. So I feel that it is my obligation to explain the law in very simple terms. Nagma-strap ko madam chair. So atong tanawon sa board, ang proseso kung naatay kontrata, mag-start na siya usually with an offer. Muto'y naitabo sa City of Dumaguete na I offer ang EM Querpo through an unsolicited proposal na magama ug reclamation, magama ug smart city. And so because of that, the Dumaguete City form ay PPP selection committee og nagnegosyeta. Pag magnegosyate, gi-acceptar na'to og nag-issue ta' ug notice of award. Now ang atong legal question karoon, kung naatay unsolicited proposal na gi-offer as a joint venture agreement, gi-negosyate as a joint venture agreement, gi-award as a joint venture agreement, unsa man ang anak-anak sa tanan nga proseso, contract ba, JVA contract ba, or a mere framework agreement or memorandum of agreement? Next slide. Ang akong tubag, Madam Chair and Honorable Counselors, kontrata ang niggawas ato ng proseso. And I think even the members of this council recognize that. I was doing a transcription of the hearing on July 7. Mr. Bandal, when he offered to sponsor it, said, "Madam Chair, before discussing the details of this draft joint venture agreement, may I be given time to present a short video?" Thank you, Honorable Bandal. The Chair, Attorney Maxino, said, "Were the councilors given copies of the proposed JVA?" Again, saying that this is a draft contract prior to the session. Unya ang last session, didto na'to ang mga gamay kalibog, kay ang joint venture agreement must be in the form of an ordinance daw. And I'd like to make an argument that under our law, draft joint venture agreement ang atong getubang. Atong tanawon usa ang next slide. Sa atong ordinance sa kini ang proseso, this is the process. All PPP contracts, meaning including a PPP contract in the form of a JVA, must be signed by the mayor with prior authorization by the Sangguniang Panglungsod through a resolution. I think ang tanan nga na katrabaho sa konceho, pamilyar ani, kay magperma ang atong mayor o mga kontrata, kinahanglan mangidog resolution, authorizing him. Now the next part is very important, which is the crux of the legal issue here. Because our own PPP ordinance says, during the consideration of the draft PPP contra or the draft joint venture agreement, by the Sangguniang Panglungsod, a public consultation or hearing shall be conducted. Unsa bang ano purpose under our law? To present the contract to the people, accountability mechanisms, PPP project, et cetera, et cetera. Logical, common sense, diba? Kay nga no man tang mo-authorize sa atong mayor na magperma o usa kabutang na wala takasabot o wala na'to napresinta sa mga mululupyo sa Dumaguete. And so after that, if the mayor gets a resolution authorizing him to sign the draft joint venture agreement, he proceeds to sign it with EM Querpo. And because the members of this council are representatives of the people, ang atong mayor na i-obligasyon na mubalik sa konceho. And this is again the third stage of the process. The terms and provisions of the PPP contract must be approved or confirmed by the Sangguniang through an ordinance. Wala namoy role na usbon ang kontrata, kaya dili man mo kapartido sa kontrata. Ang partido sa kontrata ang City of Dumaguete o si EM Querpo. But because you have the power to check and balance, sakto ang giingon ni Honorable Mason, dapat inyong gi-check na kung katung inyong gitugtan na kontrata, maugyod actually ang gi-permahan sa atong mayor. This is very basic parliamentary procedure, Madam Chair. And ato ninyi-explain pod, I feel very obligated to explain this sa mga tao sa Dumaguete kay daghan manggugkaayong yau-yau sa social media na mga divisid. But I'm a lawyer, I made an oath, I did my lawyer's oath, to explain the law correctly and without fooling people. Next slide please. And so what is the procedure again, next slide, atong i-review kay ma-istram mangyuk ko, ako mang-i-review para makasabot ang mga estudyante. So, the council is presented a draft PPP contract. Again, the draft joint venture agreement is the draft PPP contract. Kay ka ng public partnership contract, pwedeng joint venture, pwedeng build, operate, transfer, og na'taas nga lista, mga 11 types, depende sa gusto sa atong siyudad. The second is of course the public consultation and public hearing. Kay before mo mutugot sa atong mayor na mo-perma sa usa kadaku na kontrata, dapat madungugninyo kung unsa ang gibati, unsa'y naaskasinkasing ug utok sa mga mululupyo sa Dumaguete. Next slide. Sa mga tanata karoon, sunganong wala gi-konsulta ang mga tao, diri nagsugod ang kalibog sa tibuok siyudad. And this is what happened, and this is based on the records of this own chamber. Next slide. Wala gi-konsulta ang mga tao, kay pagpresentar sa kontrata, diri sa konceho. Our legal officer and our mayor told the council that the document before them is a mere memorandum of agreement. Gikan sa atong mayor ang term na memorandum of agreement. Wala na sa ato ang PPP ordinance. Wala na sa balawad on PPP and joint venture. Wala na siya'y basihan. So ang mayor lang ang nagtawag na memorandum of agreement. Next slide. Namangyud diri sa konceho karoon ang akong papa. Ni-kuyog ang akong papa, nga senior citizen, kay maminao siya sa iyang anak. Sa tanang tao nga akong naatubang, sa tibuok na akong kinabuhay, kanatag yud siya akong ka-hadlokan, kay isugkay na siya. Mag-sigin ay siyang ingon nga, ikaw kuti-kutihan kayo ka, basta mag-review ka document, kuti-kutihan. And I feel that it is my responsibility to be kuti-kutihan, because that's my oath as a lawyer. So I read through the entire draft joint venture agreement presented to the council. Atong tagnaon, kung kapila na mention ang word na memorandum of agreement sa dokumento. Pila, tagnaon na'to, zero, zero times. Namention ra ang memorandum of agreement, katung naghisgot na kabahin sa memorandum of agreement na permahan sa City of Dumaguete, EM Querpo, and the Philippine Reclamation Authority after pa magsugod ang reclamation. After pa tamu-express na, oo, ang Dumaguete pabor sa reklamasyon. But other than that, zero times to refer to the agreement between the City and EM Querpo. How many times na mention ang term joint venture agreement? Sa kontrata, kung gibasa, line by line, unsa man i-a-kung gibasa, mo-wa ba ni or JVA? 11 times. Nagtudlo ko ug obligations and contracts sa Siliman Law. Ang akong itudlo sa akong mga estudyante, dili lang ang titulog, just because ato ng tao go na memorandum of agreement, doesn't mean it's not a contract. Very basic, sa kadaghang kasong, akong itudlo sa obligations and contracts, dili na gaya na ko mamemorize karoon. Kaya that's a canalized jurisprudence. Next. Review ta' usob, so unsa may responsibilidad sa konceho, when you are presented a draft PPP contract, public consultation and hearing shall be conducted. Ang atong balawad, crystal clear. Walay puertahan para sa pagduda sa balawad na klaro. And if we have the law on our side, we don't have to be afraid. Daghan mangnaminao, namani live, that's why I'm not afraid. Because even if the law is imperfect, most of the time, the law defends the rights of the people. That is the purpose of the law. To reflect the dreams, hopes, and vision of the people of Dumaguete City. So why did we rush voting and calling this a memorandum of agreement? Why did we call a contract that said joint venture agreement 11 times? Why did we call it a memorandum of agreement? Next slide. Based on the documents, based on the minutes of this council, it is because Mayor Remolio said so. This breaks my heart, ladies and gentlemen. Because when you took your oath to serve and represent the people, you did not take an oath to serve and represent the interest of Mayor Remolio. Representante mo sa Taga-Dumaguete, representante mun ako nga nihawa sa Dumaguete when I was 16, nisa kay ug barko for the first time ni larga to Manila. And lived and fought in Manila for 17 years. But came home, saved money, worked hard, resisted. Sa yau-yau sa akong papa, nga mag-unsa ka sa Dumaguete, magnotaryo ka didto, na nakadiyas mga halls of power. Ayaw pa uli. I disobeyed my father. And I came home to Dumaguete because I love Dumaguete. And that's why I am angry. Next slide. But I will stick to the law, because that's my training. I worked hard and learned from some of the best. This slide is from no less than the Public Private Partnership Center of the Philippines, explaining in drawing form the process of unsolicited proposal. Layhan man ko drawing kay visual man ko nga tao, unya tigulang na ko, kapuyan ko basa og daghan kayo. So ang stage daw, when you receive an unsolicited proposal, you evaluate kin-sama nying ni duol sa atong siyudad, na ba ni siya'y kwarta, rehistrado ba ni siya sa atong Securities and Exchange Commission, et cetera, et cetera. For this project, reclamation, they were even required to submit under our law and under our own ordinance, feasibility study, proof of their legal capacity, proof of their financial capacity, technical documents to prove to the City of Dumaguete na kaya nilang buhaton eh. And so our PPP selection committee went through a long process. In fairness, sa atong PPP selection committee, wala sila nagdali. Two years silang nagnegosyate, kabalo si Honorable Ramon Ana, kay member siya sa PPP selection committee. So dili na'to i-judge na gi-dali-dali ang pag-negosyate. Ang nadali-dali ang pagboto, okay? Next, Swiss Challenge, diri, nayon akong manghood na dili abugado, manusblid na ko kay Swiss Challenge, unsa na. Swiss Challenge is simply saying, because a company offers to you and wala siya'y kaparam, dapat ipublish sa City ang bid aning a kompaniya. Para kung na ay laing kompaniya, nga mo-ingon, ay, hala, lamig lang itong reclamation sa Dumaguete, bi atong kontrahan kay, basig maka-afford ta' og, 20 billion, unya kita'y mo da'og. That's a requirement in the law. So ni-agi na ug Swiss Challenge, walay ni kontra sa EM Querpo, so nakada'og siya. And that's why I wish to take this moment to thank Vice Mayor Tolentino Maxino, because she was the one who posted for us the resolution of notice of award. Ang notice of award, ang meaning sa balawad, na humana ang negosasyon, okay, kapasar ang negosya, kapasar ni si EM Querpo, so ato na siyang i-award. So we went through that. Next slide. Kami, akong gigamit nying timelines, akong mga estudyante, kay mga volunteers ba ni sa Salonga Center. Ilan gi-drawing, kay nga ako ang tang i-present, katuro man ako ang maot nga type-type, nila kay lamig man, or colorful. Mauna atong process, giagian, to negotiate this, 11 meetings in a span of two years. Next slide. So if the parties go through so much... I can, should I stop, Honorable Prodigess?
Madam Chair, I got notice again, and I see the, our screen, it says...
Are we still live?
We're not live.
By the way, the City Engineers Office just called us that there will be a brief interruption for 10 minutes because they are going to fix the freezer of the vaccine, is that right, Attorney Arthur? So we have to go on break for 10 minutes at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You may proceed, ma'am.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair. So mag-review ta', after ang mga partido, ang parties, ang City o si EM Querpo nag-gahin og duha katuig na pag-negosyate. Atong pangutan o atong kaugalingon, ang mugawas ba ana, kontrata or mere framework agreement? Common sense ra, dili kinahanglag abugado. Kontrata ang mugawas. This is classic, very basic procurement law. Next slide. Now the question is, kung mag-award ka'ng kontrata, is EM Querpo qualified? Kaya ba niyang magbugkal ug 174 kahektarya sa kadagatan sa Dumaguete para magama ug isla? And so, due diligence, nakatrabaho man ko ginagmay na corporate law, nag-request ko ug document sa EM Querpo. So next slide. Kami ang atong gitawag na articles of incorporation for this company. The articles of incorporation shows what are the negosyo of the company. Unsa iyang negosyo, and under the law, what is it authorized to do? If you read their primary purpose and then their secondary purpose amended in 2018, wala in tawoy reclamation. Dili ni sila reclamation company. This is a construction company, ilang mga proyekto, hospital, eskwelahan, airport. Ang Clark Airport, sila ang nag-renovate, okay? So dili sila qualified. Next slide. Wala ko na satisfied, ingon ko basig tapulan ang abugado ni EM Querpo. Maybe the lawyer did not amend to include reclamation. Sumutan ao na po ko next steps abugado, antawag due diligence, ayuhag tuon. Kuti-kutihan ko, antawag sa kong papan ako, kuti-kutihan. Itanaw ko sa iyang website, naaba siya'y project ever on reclamation? Never, never. Wala siya kagama. So kanap pa lang, under the unsolicited proposal laws, dapat hagbong na siya. Dili ka-qualified, wala kay qualifications, out na ka'tsugi. Next. Is the company financially qualified? Again, another requirement of the law. Kitatanan, I'm sure na ibandri na kalinko dogbak, is he financially qualified? Kaya ba niya suportahan financially, naaba siya'y kwarta na magreclamation? It is not financially qualified. Company 23 billion, ang project net worth 1.4 billion. Ako pag yung gibasa iyang tibuok financial statement, nag-isturya ko ug mga experto sa banking, ug mga accountant. Asa gikan iyang kwarta, gikan siya sa utang, daghan siyang madawat, pero naapa sa gobyerno, naapa sa kamot sa gobyerno, ang iyahang receivables, trade receivables, all of it come from government. Because in fairness to this company, it is a quadruple contractor, quadruple A contractor. So daghan ni siyang gi-build na ginagmay sa ato ang country. And so, wala siya'y, dili siya liquid. Which brings us to this chika-chika, that a Chinese company, next slide, Polichangda, is actually involved. And we do have copies of the memorandum of understanding, never confirmed in this council, which should have been asked when the resolution was presented. Kay okay, wala may problema, kung mag-subcontract, normal manas construction. So I went and look, nanawag pa ko mga amigo sa Manila, let's check. Is it registered in the Securities and Exchange Commission? It is not. Meaning, wala ganit sila registered, diri's Pilipinas, wala sila upisina. Is it licensed by PIKAP, Philippine Construction? Wala siya'y license. Nanugo pa ko mga barkada sa Manila nga, basig dili updated ang website, basig offline, adu adid to be, adu act, tanawon na tung nabi lisensya, wala. And what is the business model? Ng mahadlo ka ayoko, manimbaro takong balahibo sa business model. Next slide. Under that MOU, manalik, kami ang business model. EM Querpo will sell its share, its share in the reclaimed land. So diba, 49% mapunta man sa EM Querpo? Iya daw ibalig ya ni iyahang bahin, ang iyang madawat, the proceeds ang madawat sa Polichangda, mauna iyang gamitun para ibayad din hi sa insect na kompaniya na state-owned pag yud. State-owned, meaning ang gobyerno sa China ang nagpanag-iyaan ning Polichangda. Didto siya mubayad, pag nakabayad siya, ang Polichangda will enter Dumaguete territory and proceed to do the reclamation work. Next slide. And why should this alarm Dumaguete citizens? Kay ang disenyo sa atong isla, dili tipikal na reclamation nga musumpay sa atong territory. Di siya mo tapot, ang gibuhat ni lagipalayo, 30 meters away from our shore, maglutaw siya. Making it almost impossible to dredge na gikan sa ato ang land. Unsa ilang buhaton, magpasulod sila mga barko. This is a confirmed photo from the Armed Forces of the Philippines. Next slide. This is what they're doing in West Philippines Sea, ang ilang pagpaagaw na'to karoon. They bring in what they call a cutter suction dredger. They suck sand from the sea and buhos ibuhos para magama sila isla. Now if you read the joint venture agreement, the company has three years to reclaim. Three years magbugkal ang posibling mga ingunan ning barko sa atong kadagatan sa Dumaguete para maghimo ug isla sa panahon, nga ang kinahanglan sa mga tao sa Dumaguete, bugas, tubig na kusog, ganina nag-salud pa ko gabi eh, kay hinay ang tubig. Chaktong kuryente, nga dili tamag brownout every other, at least once every Sunday. Mauna'y atong importante karoon, kinahanglan tang mukaon, kinahanglan tang mutabang sa mga pobre. Dili to potentially let a foreign, foreign company dredge and destroy our ocean. Potentially, kay wala man na gi-present kung kin saisubcontractor ni EM Querpo. And let's look at, next slide. And let's look at another disturbing provision. Ako, I stick to the law and unsa dokumento, dili kulayan anang patakaw isturya. This is an actual provision in our JVA. Ang City sa Dumaguete has the obligation to adopt all proper measures to enable EM Querpo to hire and engage foreign personnel. Hunted anusa, hunted forever. Kay tanawon na'to ang language for the project. Dili lang for the construction of the project, it's for the project. And we know that in Manila, Chinese companies bring a plane full of their own citizens to build and then a plane full of their citizens to work in the businesses that they're establishing. Ngano man tang ni sugut ana. Ngang mga tago Dumaguete, hungry for jobs, kinahanglan tag trabaho pero ni sugut ta', nga pwede di ay foreign personnel. Abi ba na ko ug para sa pobre ning Smart City? Abi ba na ko ug para sa Taga-Dumaguete ning Smart City? Ibalig ya di ay taan na ang provision, wala man ako nagiimbento. Wala man ganina ko nagitype, ako nanggi-screenshot. Next. This is just like a reflection. This is in Kawit Cavite, Pogo Island of the Philippines. It used to be covered by forest. Look at the bottom picture now. Is that what we want for Dumaguete? Kanabang atong layhan para sa atong pinalanggang siyudad? Ang akong gi-ulian, pwede naman ta' ko magtrabaho sa Manila. Nagpuyon na ko sa Europa for one year, ni uli ko. To be like that, to come home to that? Next slide. Under Republic Act 3019, it is a corrupt practice. Corrupt practice, atong usbon. To knowingly approve or grant license, permit, privilege, benefit, not qualified, to a person not qualified. Corrupt practice daw na siya. Ngano man, nga corrupt practice na siya. Because it will threaten the lives of Dumaguete people. Kung dili qualified si EM Querpo, nga magbugkal o magama ug isla. What if mahugno ng isla? What if ka ng isla, makakos og flooding? Kenaan na may urban planning expert ni sulat sa Facebook, it will block potentially six waterways. Maglunup ta' diri, and this is not being alarmist, because I've been to Cambodia, where they also built islands, and they're now flooding the mainland. So relax, na dato ang E.M. Cuervo ang taga-Dumaguete na malunod. Abi ko ba lupad Dumaguete, malumus Dumaguete di ay ta? Dili na pwede. Next slide. It is also corrupt practice to enter on behalf of the government contracts that are manifestly or grossly disadvantageous. Kanang malugi ta. Kaning corruption, class, minunlang kong class, gawas akong pagkamaestra. Kaning corruption, dili ka ng maghatod ugbag, nga daghang million million dito's balay sa mayor or sa konsihal. It is also corruption when you enter into a government contract that is manifestly and grossly disadvantageous. It is ironic, because I used to prosecute politicians when I worked in Blue Ribbon, precisely for this provision. And it pains me that I'm seeing this now, right before my eyes, na buhi siya usob. So why is it manifestly gross and grossly disadvantageous?
You have one minute left, any motion to extend?
I move to extend, Your Honor, the time of...
Second, Madam Chair.
How many?
Or at least another 10 minutes, Your Honor.
I need five minutes, Madam Chair.
We just extend, we just leave for 10 minutes, Your Honor.
Thank you, Honorable Bandal.
Okay, you'll have until 10:15.
All right. Now let's go to the terms of the contract. The contract says, the city will have a share in 25% of the ancillary businesses. But the contract also enumerates what these businesses are. Look at the screen again, ladies and gentlemen. Asa mandiya, nga negosyo, ang maka-employ ug libulibong tao. Ug libulibong kwarta ang magawas. Yacht club, akong ipangutahan na ang yacht club sa Manila, na ko manas sila kaayok. 32 employees. Asa naman ang promise jobs na to ana. Picnic grove, pilamang kabukatong ma-employ. And we agreed to 25% share, katiting. Next slide. We also agreed to waive regulatory fees and local taxes for the construction of the project. So if they're building here for three years, we will not collect regulatory fees and local taxes. So where's the promise of instant money for the city? We also said, E.M. Cuervo will pay real property tax only when they get title to the lands. Next slide. But we know, under the constitution, next slide, private corporations cannot own public lands, nasayuk ng private, public lands. That's already a decided case, paya amary case, labeled as the grandmother of all scams. Layan bata ana. And this is what breaks my heart, ako, ganina nagisegise ko papel, kay I want this to be visual. Under the, our contract, 49% of the total reclaimed lands will go to E.M. Cuervo. So inanikado ako, ato imadino. Under PRA rules, section 3, the government's share, 30%, must be devoted to roads, open spaces. Under PRA rules, the share of the PRA should be 60% of the share of government. Goes to open roads, goes to PRA. What is left sa akong kaluoy na syudad, kanina lang. Mauran ni ang umabilin na to. We're destroying at least three marine protected areas that our honorable counselors have already protected through ordinance, through extensive debates. We are not giving and promising people enough jobs, kaya to manggilabay ang provision on share in businesses. Katiting na bahin sa Yuta, ibaligya ba na to ang Dumaguete? Next slide. Was that fixed when the council or when the mayor amended the joint venture agreement? No. Kung dili ka appeal sa kontrata, dili ka appeal sa nagnegosyate, pwede bang ikaw ang mu amend sa kontrata? I don't need to pass the bar. Common sense, ano kang galabot labot? Ano ikaw mo yung ma amend? You can't, because you're not party to the contract. And ladies and gentlemen, this is not a simple procurement, this is not a simple contract na anytime pwedeng i amend. You awarded it after a long two-year process. Ung unsa imong giagrihan, that's what you are bound to. Our PPP ordinance does allow amendment. But the exception is very narrow. Only when it does not manifestly alter the nature of the contract. What does that mean? If the contract is about owning lands, dili ka pwedeng mo amend, na, ay, dili na pwedeng own land kay, na inagsabasa banga, under violation of the constitution. It's a very narrow exception. And that's why I love studying. Ang akong mga ikuhun, may ingon akong hobby studying, Golda, hobby studying. Because I like studying. So we cannot amend. And so, these are the defects. There was no public consultation in violation of our own PPP ordinance that all of you voted to pass. It violates our own PPP ordinance, and it's a good ordinance. Na atay transparency provision, na powerful kaayok. It is a corrupt practices, because an unqualified contractor who could potentially sink thousands of lives on that island, kayo dili man niya negosyo. There are suspicious subcontractors involved, and I want to manifest. E.M. Cuervo's GIS, General Information Sheet, public documents submitted to the SEC, and the MOU of E.M. Cuervo with Polichangda, were notarized by the same lawyer. The coincidence is too much, connected ni sila. Next. It's a corrupt practice to enter into economically disadvantageous contract. Kung nagtuugid ta nga maayon ni sa atong syudad, nga nung did tumanta sa palugi, nga nung lugiun manggiyong taga-Dumaguete, nga nung mangkatiting katiting atong share, aning ang kontra. And most of all, because I'm a lawyer, why do we enter into an unconstitutional contract? Do we want Dumaguete to be the situs of the next grandmother of all scams? Kita na nga ang gisugdan sa COVID. Next seat napunta on the grandmother of all scams, maulaw ko, maulaw ko. Next. We must remember that last hearing, this council approved not just the authority for the mayor to enter into this invented beast called memorandum of agreement. It approved a resolution of no objection to the project. Dili lang no objection na magsugod si mayor apply. It was a resolution of no objection to the project, which is one of three requirements in the PRA. Para magsugod na ning application, it's the letter of intent which you also approved. It's the resolution of no objection, that's section 4 of the PRA guidelines. Muong sakit kaayon ni, kanako. Next. After hearing all that, I ask myself, kinaluyan ako, should Dumaguete, kay makadungog mangguk, let's give this contract a chance. Let's give this contract a chance. So my question now is, should Dumaguete give an illegal, environmentally catastrophic, economically disadvantageous, and corrupt contract a chance? Is that what we deserve, ladies and gentlemen? Next slide. The people of Dumaguete deserve better. We are not asking the honorable counselors and the chair of this council to go above and beyond their duty. We are simply asking you to do your job, defend the law, uphold the constitution, and most of all, represent the dreams, hopes, and vision of every Dumaguete resident. Daghang salamat, proud kaayok kung naa ako dari.
We thank Attorney Benjamin for coming today. Counselor Bandal?
Uh, Madam Chair, this is not a question, uh, this is just a manifestation. Uh, earlier, Attorney Benjamin showed ka tong rug chart dito. Uh, can we, which she said that she got from the PPP?
Handbook, yes.
Do we have, let's say, uh, text ato ma'am or ka tong sa dokumentary lang?
You're already asking questions, Counselor Bandal, that's not allowed.
Sorry, I'm just asking for a copy, Madam Chair, I'm not asking questions lang.
Honorable Bandal, yes, I can give a copy to everyone in the council.
Uh, Madam Chair, I thank Attorney Benjamin for the insights, no? Uh, what she discussed were really insightful matters, uh, which I believe should be taken seriously and which I believe should be properly addressed and considered. Uh, Madam Chair, Chair, earlier, I made a manifestation that, uh, I will give a privilege speech. But, uh, with due respect, instead of giving my own privilege speech after hearing Attorney Benjamin, uh, I would rather, uh, pave, or rather, I would rather, uh, request Attorney Arbon to speak, uh, in behalf of the city and perhaps address some concerns. I believe, Madam Chair, that is allowed in our rules, specifically, uh, section 28, Madam Chair. That's just my concern sa Madam Chair.
So is that a motion for Attorney Arbon to avail the privilege, our Counselor Bandal?
Ah, yes, Madam Chair.
That will only apply if Attorney Arbon is manifesting his intention to speak during the privilege hour. Did he tell you that he's going to speak?
Yes, I was informed, uh, Madam Chair, earlier, when I inquired if Attorney Arbon is present, uh, and I asked him if, uh, he would be, uh, if he is here today, he said that he would want to address some concerns sa Madam Chair.
Okay. Attorney Arbon is at the back right now. There is a motion
Madam Chair.
by Counselor Bandal to allow Attorney Arbon to avail the privilege hour.
Second. Madam Chair.
Yes, Attorney, uh, Counselor Perdizas.
Madam Chair, just one question, I'm trying to, in our rules, there's no requirement of a prior notice?
Section 28, sir, it says there that there are actually two ways that, uh, a person can speak, either they manifest it in writing or verbally during session, or that through emotion. That's why I'm, uh, instead of me personally saying my piece, I would rather give it to Attorney Arbon, considering the, uh, I found the speech of Attorney Benjamin, uh, very insightful.
With indulgence of the other members of the council, anyway, there's a pending motion. Julie seconded objections. There being none, then Attorney Arbon is allowed to avail the privilege hour. However, however, I'm sorry Attorney Arbon, I have listed here the names of those counselors who would like to avail the privilege hour. With their indulgence, if that's okay with you, can we allow Attorney Arbon to speak first?
You do very well, Madam Chair.
All right.
That's also in accordance sa Madam Chair of our policy to be transparent, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor, sorry, Attorney Arbon is recognized.
Madam Chair.
I thank again Attorney Benjamin.
Can we thank first, yes?
Madam Chair, should I leave the podium?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Ayong untag, Madam Chair.
Morning.
And the honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglungsod of Dumaguete, tanan nga mga bisita karoon dari. Uh, ang akopong parente si Attorney Golda. Uh, daghan kayang salamat sa pagpadayag sa imohapod nga opinion, agig pagsupak sa maong proyekto nga giindursos sa kasamtangang administrasyon. Napatod akong uyoan si Attorney Benjamin. Usata na mga bisita, no, ka tong mga pabor o dili pabor aning ang project. Na ako karoon dari, Madam Chair, tungod kay, nakadungog ko nga si Attorney Golda Benjamin, adunay hangyo nga mapadayag sa iyahang punto legal, kabahin aning ang proyekto. Unya, nakabot po ko gamay sa iyahang ipaambit kaninyo kanatong tanan. So, ang diferensya na mo ni Attorney Benjamin kay patsada kay siag slides. Uh, and I appreciate it and the work of your students also. Ang akorang ipaambit karoon, Madam Chair, is, uh, sa akorapong mahibauan, kabahin aning ang project from the perspective of the executive branch. Um, membro ko sa selection committee ang amo ang chairman, si Attorney Doram Dumalagan, ang ato ang kasamtangan nga city administrator. Og ubay ubay ang miembro sa selection committee. Di tugutan po ko sa ato ang mayor, si Mayor Iperimolyo nga, kung panhihundari para mapadayag po, o pipila ka mga puntos kabahin ani. So, pasensyal ang gyudha kung wala ko is slide, so I hope makasinabot tagiha puntan ani. Ang atong katuyuan, Madam Chair, kamatuuran man lang, magsinaptanay. For the record, dili mi kontra ni Attorney Benjamin. Uh, wala tay away ani nga issue, walay personal nga issue. Ang ato lang tanawon, kung sa atong pananaw, makatabang bagud ni sa kadaghanan, dirisnak bayan sa Dumaguete, asta nagani sa probinsya sa Negroes Oriental. So for the record, I'm not picking any fights with anybody, whether they are friends, real friends, or mga oppositors lang. Di lang may makasinabot lang dagway sa among tagsa tagsa ka perspective. So, sharing lang ta sa ato ang nahibalan. Unsa man ang reclamation. Matod pa sa nedda, uh, joint order ni atong 2015. Niingon nga ang reclamation is the deliberate process of converting forshore land, submerged areas, or bodies of water into land by filling or other means using dredge fill and other suitable materials for specific purpose or purposes. Ato pa, gituyuggyud na tambakan ang usa ka forshore land kanang baybayon o bakaha, Yuta nga natabunan gyud ug dagat, okay? Ginamit ang materialis nga haom para sa maong kaatuyuan. Kaning nga definition mga kaigsuunan, giriiterate podisia sa PRA, uh, sa ilang implementing rules and regulations sa Ordendi Ekutiva, or Executive Order Number 74, series of 2019. Word for word, ilahapong giadap ang maong kahulugan. Mangutan ata, iligal ba ang reklamasyon? O legal ba kini? Reclamation is legal. Okay? Ang ato ang charter sa Dumaguete, naghatag na to og katungod nga mo reclaim. Kani ato na I.R.A. 1899, niingon nga tanang mga chartered cities sama sa Dumaguete, naasilay katungod mo reclaim og forshore lands, pero kanang nga balawod, gipanas na na. Giilisan siya atong PD or decree presidencial, PD3-a. Nagingun ang atanang project sa reclamation ang magdumala ni ini ang national government. Okay? Karoon, nahimo ang Philippine Estate Authority or PEA, naapoy balawod gehimoan na PD1084. Ang iyahang tumong siya mo'y magdumala sa mga reclamation projects. Ang iyahang tumong siya mo'y magdumala sa mga reklamation projects. Karoon ang PEA, giwagtang na siya gielisan og Philippine Reclamation Authority. Sa ato ang mismong Local Government Code of 1991, tatao kay diha gibutang nga ang reklamation project pwede gusang buhaton sa usaka local government unit, like the province. Section 17b4 also says nga ang tananga home sa probinsya pwede pong buhaton sa lungsod, pareho sa Dumagueti. So pwede gutang magreklamasyon, legal ang reklamasyon. Sa akin ang giunsulti sa unahan na ay Executive Order Number 74, Series of 2019, karoon ang PRA adunan ay jurisdiction kabahin sa mga reklamation projects. So lakto ng pagkaistorya, legal kung magreclaim, okay? Legal kung magreclaim. Naalang kay sundon nga mga patakaran. Munang naatay EIA law, okay? Environmental impact assessment. Wala na gagingon nga kung maingon ta magreclaim, tambak ay tambak. Layuk pa kay na taas pang ang proseso, posible ganey nga dili madayon. Tungod sa mga, uh, requirements na gi pangayos sa regulatory agencies sama sa PRA, DNR, no? So, na ay EIA, ang EIA resulta na niya Environmental Compliance Certificate or ECC. Pag naakay ECC, sa ato pa nasubay ni mo ang patakaran. Kung wa ni mo masubay ang patakaran, dili ka isyuhan sa DNR og ECC. Ending, walay project masugdan. So usbon ko, ang reklamasyon as a government activity is legitimate, it is also legal. Okay, now, katung unsolicited proposal kabahin aning 174 hectares nga offshore reklamasyon. Offshore siya kay wala man siya diri sa ato ang baybayon, okay? Offshore siya, tuwa siya dito sa lawon. Um, gi pakita man siguro ni Paniera Benjamin nga, uh, gidili ang JVA's under sa ordinance, uh, PPP ordinance in 2016. Pero kung imong sutao ngud ang ordinance, uh, 2016, ang PPP ordinance of 2016, gialaw gud ang unsolicited proposals, no? Uh, under section 23. Tinuod medyo na ay confusion kay nabutangan man dito nga no unsolicited JVA's are allowed sa karaan nga ordinan sa. Pero ang among pagtanaw sa maong ordinan sa nga, ang section 7 point 13 point 9, di niingon nga no unsolicited, uh, JVA's, uh, is allowed. Kung imo siyang ikumparal sa section 23 sa maong ordinan sa, niingon mapod nga pwede ang unsolicited proposal. So lakto ng pagkaistorya, ako, dili dagway ko maayok ayok pareho ni Attorney Benjamin, pero akong nasabtan po sa statutory construction, kung mag, kung adunay pagduda o panagbangi sa duhaka provision sa usara kabalao, imong tanawon ang mas ulahinga provision, ang section 23. In statutory construction, the principle is if there appears to be a confusion or a conflict between two provisions in the same law or ordinance, then you try to harmonize the ordinance. Imong iharmonize para ang tinuod o nga intent mugawas. Nangkaroon kay ang section 23 mas ulahiman sa section 7, among panghuna una nga pwede ang unsolicited proposals. Anyway, kana ang ordinan sa ato na nang gielisan ni atong January 2021, no? Naanatay PPP ordinance of 2021. So, mangutan na, so nga nung gi amendar, uh, kay tungod ane nga provision nga medyo na ay makalibo og prangkang pagkaistorya, kasunod po ni og template niya na ay mga modifications along the way. So, paginterpret, usahay confusing, so may pa og atong klarohon, okay? Atong gibutang, for example, na kung na ay mga requirement sa PPP modalities, ang katurang na hintungdan appropriate government agency maoy ato ang paminaon, okay? Wa man ta kabaloo og sa ug madamla, naapabay DNR, naapabay PRA, naapabay, um, NEDA, basig mausub napod ang struktura sa gobyerno, so atong gihimbutang nga dili hingan lang sila, basta kay og unsa existing national agency at the time, then mo'y ato ang sundon, okay? So, nga noman nga, naapsan man, ingon ta, ang kaning proposal, unsolicited proposal sa bagong nga ordinan sa in 2021. Sakto tong giingon ni Attorney, uh, Benjamin nga November 25, 2019, maunay paghimugsos sa proposal, nipresentar ang private sector proponent og unsolicited proposal, Noviembre 25, 2019. Pero pagkaenero o febrero, ga discuss, ga discuss, kasugod na ta og initial review, kay mo may giingon sa ordinan sa kani ato. Apan pagka-marso 2020, nasayod namantang tanan, isulod man si COVID. So nastold, wala na kayo siya na atiman kay na focus na ta sa unsaon pagpakgang aning COVID. Lakto pagkaistorya, na amendar pagkaenero 2021 ang atong ordinan sa. So mangutan na, katunggi trabaho sa selection committee na hunong bato. Kay nabago man ang ordinan sa, ang among tubag, wala. Ngano man, kay sa bagong ordinan sa, sa section 44, letter D, mauni ang giingon. And I quote, "Procedures and steps commenced and undertaken for the selection of and statuses and rights conferred on a PSP prior to the effectiveness of this ordinance shall be operative, confirmed, and recognized, and shall henceforth be continued under this ordinance," end of quote. Sa ato pa, og unsa tong nasugdan sa selection committee base sa karaan nga PPP ordinance, ni padayon ra gehapon ang among trabaho, kay mo may mandato namo.
Sorry to interrupt Attorney Arbon, your 15-minute time limit is up. Do you want to extend, Counselor Vandal?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, uh, in the same way that we give extension to
How many minutes?
Attorney Benjamin. Same time.
By second, Madam Chair.
Second. Okay, there's a motion to extend for another 15 minutes, Julie seconded, objections. There being none, motion is carried.
Dagang salamat, Madam Chair. So, ang unsa na human na sa selection committee, o unsa gibuhat sa selection committee, mahitungod aning unsolicited proposal, gi padayon ra siya under sa new ordinance. Now, baliwala ba nato ang mga national nga balao? Ang tubag, of course not. Kay sa section 45 sa atong bagong PPP code, claro kay diha nga, musunod ra gehapon ta sa national law kung kinahanglan o nkinig sundon, okay? Now, ang pangutan na, kay gepakita man, may akong naaktan ganina sa slide, sa naunang speaker, ingon siya nga 49% sa mar reclaimed land, unya puhon og madayon, iyahan na sa proponent, EM Cuervo. Ang tubag ano, in the end, depende ra gina sa PRA. Timanan na nato nga draft rani siyatan na, no? Pak, in a way, kay pagabot dito sa unahan, rebihon pa man na sa PRA. Pero, depende niya sa PRA, og og okay ra ba niya ng 51%, 49% in favor sa gobyerno, okay? Kay sa section 11, sa ilahang sharing scheme, sa EO 74, Series of 2009, ang implementing rules and regulations nag-ingon na dili mo menos sa 50% ang mabahin sa gobyerno. Dili mo menos, sa ato pa, kay ang gahom sa pagreview, sa agreement, o kontrata, naaman sa PRA. Kung maingon ang PRA gamay ra kay ng 51%, patas ina, is 75-25, is 60-40. Di bulahan ang dakba yan. Munang maingon ta, in the end, ang PRA ra gud ang magbuot, og tugutan ba kaning bahinanay nga scheme? Kanang niingon 49% ni subay ramanta sa Executive Order implementing rules and regulations. Supak di ay na sa balao kung musubay ta ni ini. Dili kita mo'y gabuot, ano, ang Executive Order through the implementing rules ang nag-ingon nga dili mo menos sa 50% ang mabahin sa gobyerno, meaning pwede pasang mataasan. Munya akong giingon kani ato in the previous sessions nga, PRA ra gay magbuot, og maingon ang PRA patas ina, imo ang 80% pabor sa gobyerno. Depende na na sa proponent, og musukol ba siya dili, pero kanang pagbuot pila atong bahin, ang PRA mo'y na ay final say. So, niingon ang atong higala si Ma'am Golda nga, katiting ra kayo ang 25%. One-fourth sa imong sweldo is not katiting. One-fourth sa imong income is not katiting. I'm not defending the investor, but by looking at it, ang arrangement is, wala ta dita mo buog daghang billion ka pesos, ilatanan ang gastos sa reclamation works. Naatay sharing, katunggi ingon niya ganina, katunggi pangwave ang mga fees. Pero dili man na siya every day, this is for the construction phase. Ang atong tanawon, inig mahuman na ang proyekto, unsa mga oportunidad, beneficio nga masulod diha sa 74 hectareas nga reclaimed land. Ang 25% refers to the income sa business.
Wa ni mo masubay ang patakaran.
Okay, di maingon ta, gamay ra kaayon ang makatrabaho. Kay dito sa yacht club sa Manila, 32, siguro. Pero dili ramana maoy mahitabo diha puhon og tugutan. Kay daghan pan man nga mga locators, pwede man na ay mga investors musulod diha. Dili man kanalang, those are precisely called ancillary business. Pwede man magtuko diha mga buildings. And by the way, pagpatuko diha mga buildings diha, magsubay gehapon na sila sa building code and other laws. Wa nag-ingon nga mahimo na siyang teritoryo sa China o unsa pa diha ang nasod. Because, kamuo Madam Chair, in this council, pwede manggud mong maka-influence through an ordinance. Unsa pwede, unsa dili pwede diha. It's not as if that kung na reclamation mabutang na diha mga kaiksuanan, igon na lang ta ang manguyopus o magtanaw, no! Dili na maoy tumong sa reclamation project. Gibutangan og isla para na ay ubang mga economic activities, okay? Diha ta makatabang og lahutay sa ato ang mga kaiksuanan. magsubay ba ta sa NEDA guidelines? Depende sa PRA. Kay ang PRA nag-ingon, kung na ay mga reclamation project proposals, naasilay gitawag og advisory opinions, they will solicit from the NEDA, from the DNR, from the Department of Finance, ipatanaw nila ang kontrata or agreement, o ang sharing. Kay sila mismo, they have their own guidelines, they will also review. Wala na tay labot, ano, ilahan na na sa national. Pero wala diti ang PRA nga mangonsulta sa maong mga national agencies, okay? So, ang akobong nahibalaan, uh, base sa, uh, discussion or sharing sa father of the PPP concept, si Attorney Al Agra nga, ang kanang BOT or kanang joint venture, kasagaran, kung naay ordinance, ordinance ang sundon. Bot, then you follow the NEDA guidelines. Na atay giisgutan ganina nga maka nosebleed katung Swiss Challenge, okay? Ato na ba ning giwagtang base sa ato ang present ordinance? Ang tubag, wala. Naaragyon ang Swiss Challenge. Makita nato na sa section 18 sa ato ang code, ika-third stage na siya. So, kay wala gibutang ang pila kadays ni mo i-post, that doesn't necessarily mean that it is illegal. Okay, ang atong ordinance niingon ramana nga i-post, okay? I-publish ang Swiss Challenge, and we did that. Katapusan, Madam Chair. Katubang ah amended MOU or JVA nga approve sa ato ang Sanguniang, ngayong giaprubahan, maubani ang PPP contract? Sa ato nang gi kaingon, sa atong pagtanaw, dili ni maang kontrata. This is not the PPP contract referred in our ordinance. We believe this is not, and we are convinced it is not, why? Because katung draft JVA na gi submit sa unsolicited proposal, together with the unsolicited proposal, katu siya for initial evaluation sa selection committee, iconsider siya na moto ang iyahang proposed contract, alright? So we treated it as the proposed contract, but that is not the final contract. Why? Because musunod man ta sa atong PPP ordinance. Ang atong PPP ordinance tatao mapod kay diha. Na ang ato ang PPP contract has to be in ordinance form. So dili lagyon na umutupa sa inyuhang mga lamesa og mga kamot, Madam Chair. Kamu gyapoy magbuot. Now, sa lakto ng pagkaistorya, mangutan ata, asan namanday takaron, okay? Ah, by the way, kabahin ang PPP contract, kay sa makalibog mong gipod. Kung tanaw na to ang PPP ordinance, naagani, gi mentioned ya nga principal PPP contract, naapoy ancillary PPP contract. Pero, sa akin ang gi kaingon, Madam Chair, the MOU or the JVA that was presented to your, to your body was not and is not the PPP contract, okay? Although, in the end, possibly nga, some of those provisions would be repeated in a future contract, ideliberate mananinyo, public consultation will be there. So asan namantakaron, we are done with stage one. Manata sa selection process, we already, uh, issued the original proponent status. Sakto si Ma'am Golda, it took us more than a year, several meetings. We are done with stage two, which is the Swiss Challenge, na publish ni siya sa national newspaper, okay? And, in the timeline, approved by the, by the mayor, gibutang dito, from April 30, muna ang submission, until May 27. Wala may usangan ni hatag og expression of intent. They could have if they really wanted to. Kung decide dugo git sila, nga mo contest, mo challenge, wala man. So, kung tanaw na to ang MOU, Madam Chair, claro kay diha sa whereas clause, if you have a copy of the MOU. nga, gi paputang gina, we know, among us lawyers, we will say ang whereas clause mean nothing, actually they do. They're like the preamble in the constitution, they provide us guidance. Although it's not part of the substantive term, but it provides us guidance. Anyway, it says there in the MOU, na, "The parties are fully aware that the project will go through a process of application and approvals with the Philippine Reclamation Authority and the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, and the parties are committed to comply strictly with all the requirements." Another whereas, "The parties have agreed not to comply strictly with all the requirements." Another whereas, the parties have agreed not to commence, not to implement, not to construct or build structures until all the requisite compliances and approvals from concerned government agencies have been sought. And we also added, whereas the parties agreed to conduct public consultations in all stages of the process, including but not limited to concept and schematic designs and as soon as a detailed engineering designs, hydrodynamic modeling, geographic investigation and other supporting documents for area clearance, environmental impact assessment and environmental compliance certificate are ready for submission with the concerned government agencies. So, we see to it na ang mga tao madungog. And I think this is one good opportunity also for the people to their able champions to come here and say against vasila or pabor. And I thank the council for that, Madam Chair. Now, two more salient provisions in the proposed contract or proposed MOU. Not proposed, but the one that was approved. Gibutang diha, Mr. Chair.
You have three minutes more, Attorney Arbon. Move to extend, Madam Chairman, to 15 minutes.
I'll be done. I'll be done after reading this provision, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Section 6.2.3 says there that the PRA will have to issue the reclamation permit and then we can have the contract. Then magtukay na kabahin sa terms and conditions. You can have more public consultations. But this to me, Madam Chair, is a most important provision. Section 9.3. In the event the application with the Philippine Reclamation Authority and the Department of Environment and Natural Resources to pursue this project shall be denied with finality by the respective agencies. The parties herein hereby waive all rights and obligations under this agreement, which becomes fungtus of issue or without force and effect. End of quote. Meaning to say, Madam Chair, atong mga tinahod nga ngaminaw, ang PRA maui o ang DNR maui dakug influensya ni. Kung bisan asan nilang duha, maingon with finality, dili pwedeng ipadayon ng reclamation project kay munya ang mga problema, munya ang kakulangan. Dili na mo tagaag isisi, dili tagaag reclamation permit. Wala'y reclamation mahitabo. So, for now, our city mayor, Mayor Ipe Rimolio, and our city government have not executed and signed any MOU, any JVA, any PPP contract with EM Cuervo. Wala'y gipirmahan nga dokumento pa. So, mangutan ata, unsa man kabahin tanan ning mga burukarun. Na wala pa man gi di ay pinirmahan nga dokumento. Munang hangyo sa ekutiba, Madam Chair, og sa katawan sa Dumagete. Ayaw ramog kabalaka. The proper time will be called so that the documents, kani inyong gi pang pangutan na gi pang raise, will be raised again and hopefully answered by the proponent pod. Para masuta gi na to og naabago siya katakos o wala. Maora na. Toxic na gi kaayo ang environment. Ako maka ang environment? Toxic napod ang infigurative way. Toxic ang environment kabahin ani nga issue. Kadawat nakuh mga text messages, maingon na mga nanggawa sa atong kabahig relihiyon. Tungod lang anang 174 hectare nga plano nga wa pagani di ay gani. Wala'y gi pang pirmahan, but I appreciate make no mistake, Madam Chair. Pasalamat ang anay mga tao ang nipadala ani isang mga opinyon, ilang mga kahadlok sa maong proyekto. But in due time, in a proper forum, not on the kanan mga social media nga magdautan na ita or threats nga pangiyahaan ta. Dili dagway na kitatanan, ganahan mo palambu ang dakba yan sa Dumagete. And for the record, Madam Chair, I was born in Dumagete. I was raised in Dumagete. I was schooled in Dumagete. Gradwado ko sa Saint Louis School dun Bosco. Kamangko high school diha, elementary, hundred high school. Teiko akong education sa Siliman in Dumagete. Nag-abogasiya ko diri sa Dumagete. Lumad kong taga-Dumagete, Madam Chair. Tungod lang kay mo pabor me sa reclamation, taugo na me. Og mga yawa, mga kurakot, dili dalim. Sweeto na si Attorney Benjamin. Akong amahan wala, migipatubog kinawat na kwarta. But for some people to insinuate online, social media, nga money has changed hand. Sakit. It's not fair. It's not fair. I am doing this kaning project not for the, not just for us. Gahunauna na ko sa akong mga apo. Na hopefully, ang atong ekonomiya sa Dumagete can sustain the number of graduates we produce every year. Pila kalibo ang nang graduate sa Siliman nga nakatrabaho sa Dumagete. Graduate sa Saint Pauls nakatrabaho sa Dumagete. Daghan kay mga tao diha ga hilom-hilom ra, pero sakit ang kasing-kasing. Eh si mama, si papa nagOFW, twas Manila ba, twas Mindanao na narbao. Ngano man, kay wala tay matrabaho dries Dumagete. Karun, ang atong dakba yan na ning kamot nga mangimbitar og mga investor para diri, para mulambo atong ekonomiya, para ang mga tao dili na magpalayo. Wala'y mga pamilyang magkabuak-buak. Niya i-conclude dayon. Ngana ay nangurakot. Dili dalim. Kung buhi pas papanahoron, niya munya ang storya ay ang madungog, siguro. Masampalungan dagway ko, og maingon siya nga gabuhat baka anadong. And I will bravely tell my father, no dad. I can look at you in your eye, wala min nangwarta ani dad. We're just doing our job. So, I just hope, katung mga supporters na to, sa atong opinyon, I would like to ask nga itempor down ang language kung mahimo lang. Kung paragutas Dumagete, dili ta mag-away. I got married here, I'm raising my kids here, and I plan to die here in Dumagete. Not in some other place. So, kung atong tuyo day mag-away ta, wala'y lami. This is not the kind of Dumagete that I have, have come to know of. So bason lang, in the proper forum, not in the social media. Kay social media dagan kay kulang, false assumptions, fallacious conclusions, kay kulang of facts. That's why, oyun ko ano ni Ma'am Golda, public consultation ta, wala'y problema. Pero dili na tao mag-insinuate nga na ay mga criminal among us. That's not really fair. Sa akong side, I try to minimize interaction kay bastos naman ang uban. Dili na healthy. And I'm sure this is not what we also want. If we want to oppose, fine. But let's drop the name-calling or insinuations of corruption or graft. So dagan kay salabat, Madam Chair. Salamat sa ato ang bisita. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Okay, thank you Attorney Arbon. Counselor Aramis is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You may leave, Attorney Arbon.
May I begin?
Go ahead.
To my esteemed colleagues in the city council, the very dedicated staff of this body, our passionate resource persons and viewers, dearest Dumagetanyos, and to everyone who just loves Dumagete, good morning. I rise today for and on behalf of our constituents who have reposed their full trust and confidence unto us as their duly elected representatives. I thus address this humble chamber and especially the public in recognition of my sworn and solemn duty to uphold the constitution, respect our laws, and embody the sovereign will of the people. In the course of two weeks, we have been made aware of the pleas and opinions of our stakeholders with regard to the proposed reclamation project that will construct a 174 hectare artificial island that will stretch across a significant portion of our city's coastline. In this same period, the city council has already been asked in two occasions to authorize the mayor to sign a joint venture agreement or memorandum of understanding with a private sector partner, that is EM Cuervo Incorporated. Last week, the city council was also requested to issue a resolution of no objection to the proposal and to grant the mayor the authority to apply in behalf of the city a letter of intent to the Philippine Reclamation Authority or PRA. As we all know, all these were easily accomplished with a swift affirmation and consent of the majority of the members of this body. Despite the lack or failure to initiate and conduct a series of public consultations that will satisfy the requirements of law and logic, considering the magnitude and scale of this project. The mayor and majority members of the council have promised that such public consultations will be done later and in due time. My plain and simple questions are, when? And when public consultations will indeed be conducted later on, will the voice of the people truly matter then? Let us note that the city council in a six-three vote has already issued a resolution of no objection to the project. It is therefore my worry that the public consultation as envisioned by the mayor and his supporters will only be a mere exercise of utility. An ordinary sense of care and prudence dictates that we don't have to wait for the conduct and completion of a feasibility study and environmental impact assessment to discuss and deliberate upon, at least preliminarily, the scale and gravity of the damage and destruction that will result from the construction of this artificial island. It is well within our power and authority to invite stakeholders and experts in urban planning, sustainable development, marine conservation and environment protection, and organize an open dialogue with them and the public for us to form an intelligent and responsible stand on the issue. One that is consistent with our constitution, our laws, our morality, our logic, and our conscience. In that dialogue, we can already address and answer these critical and fundamental questions. Una, kinsa og unsa ang kapasidad og reputasyon anang EM Cuervo para kita makasalig og makataya sa atong kinabugi nga tarungan nila og gama og tukod ng proyektuha. Ikaduha, dili ba kinima kabalabag sa normal na agianan sa tubig og magresulta og grabe nga pagbaha? Nakini makahatag og kadaut og peligro sa mga nagpuyos sa kilid sa suba og daplin sa dagat? Ikatolo, dili ba kinima kaingon og dakung kadaut sa atong kadagatan nga maoray gisaligan isip panginabugi sa atong manginisda? Ikaupat, makasalig bagyut ta na ang mga residente sa Dumagete ang makabeneepisyo o mabulahan aning proyektuha. Kung ang kontrata og mga papeles, wala ga hisgot og wala gamanbo na ang mga construction workers, engineers, architects, og uban pang mga trabahante hinahanglan mga lumulupyo sa Dumagete og sa atong probinsya. Our country's experience should tell us that big-ticket infrastructure projects funded and led by Chinese firms will give preference to the employment of Chinese workers. In a summit hearing conducted last October 2020 with the Department of Public Works and Highways, or DPWH, we have learned that 31 to 45% of the workforce involved in those projects are Chinese or foreign nationals. Ikalima, pagkahunan aning proyektuha, makasigurado bata nga makabeneepisyo bagyutang tanan. Libre raw bagyut ng proyektuha. The supporters of this project always say that the city government will not spend a single penny to realize this project. But ordinary human experience should teach us better. There is no such thing as free lunch. In constructing this so-called smart city, we are in fact paying more by surrendering to outside parties a vital and strategic portion of our territory, by risking the future of our children and grandchildren, by consciously destroying and burying hectares upon hectares of natural marine habitats, by depriving fishermen and their families of their source of income, and by endangering the lives and safety of our people because of the actual threats of severe flooding and other ill effects of poorly planned urban development. Considering that the very lives of the people of Dumagete depend on these fundamental and critical questions, we shall not dare, and it is against our sworn duty, to simply wait and see until this dream of a project becomes a nightmare that we can no longer wake up from. Kung maoyon og mapadayon taanin ang proyekto, wala nay at rasay. The Dumagete of today is something that we can already be proud of. We are a university town. We are home to several outstanding universities, colleges, and schools. That produce exceptional graduates who then become globally competitive professionals and leaders in their respective fields. For many good reasons, we are also recognized as a retirement haven and have become a second home to thousands of people from different parts of the world. We have an active and dynamic food and business scene that is inclusive and welcoming to small market players and young entrepreneurs. We have a vibrant culture that celebrates and recognizes our intimate relationship and coexistence with nature. We have a colorful colorful history that eternalizes the legacy of our ancestors who fought for our freedom and identity and honors the sacrifices of our forefathers who carefully built Dumagete into a safe and progressive city that it is now. We have friendly and peace-loving people that embraces diversity, tolerates differences in background and opinion, and gives importance to the free expression of faith, ideas, and beliefs. All these are now being seriously threatened by the efforts of a few who attempt to redefine and change the Dumagete of today in the guise of development. This is not to say however that I am anti-development, but I am for sustainable development. My stance is consistent with our intergenerational responsibility to protect and preserve our environment and natural resources for the future generations to come so that they can also enjoy the fundamental right to a balanced and healthful ecology. We are, after all, just stewards of God's creations. Ladies and gentlemen, I also take this opportunity to gently but seriously remind myself and my colleagues in the city council that we are public servants and that we were voted for and elected by the people to perform the functions of our office in a manner that respects the people's will, promotes their interest, and advances their welfare. In the regular exercise of our delegated lawmaking power, we are therefore duty-bound to reach out to our constituents, listen to their opinions, and understand their pleas. In an undertaking that can either push the city to unprecedented progress or lead Dumagete to become a man-made disaster, everyone's opinion count and they equally matter even if they come from young advocates, street vendors, concerned housewives, or from a simple man on the street. We shall not be arrogant and pretentious to say that we know better or we know enough to easily dismiss what our constituents are saying. Moreover, the high standards of honesty, integrity, responsibility, and loyalty require the public officials to not cease to operate even as we leave the four corners of this chamber. As public officials, As public officials, we are always fully accountable to the public except only with regard to those acts that are done in the privacy of our own homes. In faithfully and successfully disposing our burdens and mandates as legislators, we should continuously listen to our people even if it means being criticized at all costs. With that being said, I pray for those who support the project, especially for my colleagues here in the City Council. I pray that their conscience will speak to them and may they think about their children and their children's children, for them to gain the courage and confidence to break free from political colors and to finally speak and decide for and only for the people of Dumagate. It is never too late. Nevertheless, I would also like to thank the Dumagetanians for their constant faith and courage in expressing their views of opposition and dissent. We warmly welcome your opinions. Hinaut na magpadayon kitang maguban para sa tinuod na kalambuan o kaayuhan sa atong pinalanggang siyudad. Daghang salamat o maayong buntag sa tanan.
Counselor Urbas is recognized.
Your Honor, sa kadagan sa mga issues na diskusyon sa ganhiha, I'd like to start with Attorney Manny Arbon. Sa kamo, sa kauban sa kausa since 2010. Nung si Attorney Arbon nga, I'd like to start at the end of his speech. Na dagang trabaho ko ng mahatag ngayong island na gamon. Kung atong naon, Your Honor, it's easy for us to give an impression to the public. Mahatag ang impression sa mga tao sa Dumagate, sa mga pobre. Kung may baga kayo, na nagdagat trabaho, ato gumigamon ngayong island sa dagat, kaya na ay dagat trabaho diya. Kung sa mala, wala. Kung sa mala, dili Dumagate karoon, alitas Dumagate, suraimos downtown. Suraimos ang mga negosyo, pila kalibuwan ka negosyo sa Dumagate, wala trabaho. Pero pila kapasyento ang taga-Dumagate ang trabaho. Pila kapasyento ang nakatabaho sa Dumagate. Mga anak sa mananagat, mga anak sa mga kapintero, anak sa mga ng iskula diya sa Dumagate. Ang mga ng iskula sa Dumagate nga taga-Dumagate, wala rin nakatabaho, tagaasa ng uban. Kung sa may garantiya na taon ay island, taga-Dumagate pa na makatabaho. Na dili Dumagate, ganoon magikatabaho sila tanan. So therefore, it's not an issue of work. It's not an issue of work. It's not even an issue of progress because Dumagate is progressive. Look at Dumagate. It's progressive. What more progress can we expect? Destroy the sea and get some progress out of it? Is that the kind of progress we're expecting? Destroy our nature? That is progress. Because at least there's an island that comes out after destroying it. Your Honor, I wish to appreciate what the mayor is trying to ask from the council, but in the end, it's very hard for us to understand why? Because there are a lot of shady deals in this transaction. Kung nungang ang mga tao madunug, ganaan ta madunug ang mga tao. That's what Attorney Arbon is saying. Ganaan si mayor madunug ang mga tao. He got this transaction na dawat niya ang unsolicited proposal in November 25, 2019. Attorney, naman buwan na katuig ni Agi karoon. November 25, 2019, fiesta sa Dumagate. Tulungka isang kausa sa kausa, gikan sa November 25, hundred-two weeks ago. Nani-sultisias mga tao na ako'y gawinan din transaksyon. Na ako'y gawinan din transaksyon na nag-ingon, nga na ay magtukod ngayong island sa atong Yuta di sa Tubangas dagat. Mutaan ako, kanus ang mataangin pa ibaloon? Kanus ang mataangin konsultaon? Now, why do I say shady? Nangayos si mayor o authority to sign the JVA. Now, the question is, kung may ka authority to sign the JVA, is it not the right, the obligation of the council to ask the people of Dumagate, will I give the mayor that authority to sign a JVA that says, magtunga miss Yuta, ang akong bahin forty-nine percent, ang inyong bahin diya fifty-one percent? Sa fifty-one percent, sixty percent na PRA, ang sobra na ang inyong sa Dumagate? Sa inyong bahin sa Dumagate, ako'y matabaho, ako po si Cuervo, matabaho ano? Ako ngaman na diya yate, talagang dungguan na si ate, dungguan na helicopter? Dayon, sa akin, income na, ako po ng income. Ben si ko po siento na akong ihatag ninyo, Dumagate, muna ninyo bahin. All these transactions, is it not the duty of the city government or the mayor to inform the public that at the time he received that proposal, he should have already consulted the people of Dumagate? Is it not his obligation? Sumingun ta karoon, ang argumento karoon sa city, ayak abalaka, ato sa lang iitagans sa mayor authority. Ato po sa tagal certificate of no objection. Yet despite the objection, na no objection, people in Dumagate for one week, two weeks have been clamoring, why can't we be consulted? Yet the council has given the mayor that certificate of no objection. Only the council is not objecting, but a lot of people in Dumagate are objecting. Where is now consultation? Are we really serious about consultation? Are we? Now, Attorney Arbon is saying, mga sultas mga tao si mayor, wala ni-pirma karoon. But in the first place, wala pa sa nangayon na authority to sign. Kung seriosong sa mga sultas, siya unang mga tao before siya ni-pirma. Wala ni-pirma, kaya pa rin masamukha kayo. Why will he sign? That is signing his own deathbed in politics? Kung pirmas ya? In the first place, he should not even have asked that authority and consulted the people first. Now, the PPP ordinance, nung ta last time, maybe I was wrong at the time, maybe I was too presumptuous at the time, that I said ang PPP ordinance gi amender, magpalk sa whole scheme. The Honorable Chair, the Vice Mayor, who was the author of the amended PPP, said, I did not, I have no bad faith in making that amendment. But if we look at the amendments now, specifically on certain provisions, ang Swiss challenge, mga tao sa Dumagate, ipublish sa newspaper, the old ordinance says sixty days ang atong time allowance para kunain mo contest. Matagaan sila time, o ganaan sila offer, o mas maayon na offer sa siyudad, sixty days. But in the new ordinance, gitang tang ng sixty days. Wala nay sixty days sa Swiss challenge. So whether that was coincidental only, I cannot judge, and I won't judge. Now, ang ako rin is, ma'am, I, can you please show that? Okay, let me start with this. Ay, mura sa'yo, ma'am. Ah, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, tosana. Nandyan, tosana, tosana, ma'am. Tapos sa paliwong. Now, kumutan na mo sa video ni mayor, pa rin gupo ka kitaraon. Kaya niya smart city, pagka-gupo na smart city. But is it silly smart enough? Twenty-three billion investment. Of the twenty-three billion investment, all about reclamation. Kaya na mga buildings nga makita na to diyan ang gatindog. Wala na labas twenty-three billion. Pasabot, mahumanin tulok atuig, ang atong makuha diya just a barren land. Papag na ngayutara. Now, the question now, is there an assurance kaya na mga building nga matindog? Or katunggi pa kita gano'n ito ni Golda na Pogo Island? Namurere mga warehouse ang gatindog? Wala nas kontrata? But we are now given a very nice future, a very futuristic community that is not even found in the JVA. It's not even found, and there's a commitment on the part of EM Cuervo ang magtukod si kina na mga building nga na. The only ones found there is yacht club, yacht nga kuwan, helicopter nga kalandinganan, et cetera. There's nothing about buildings. Because the twenty-three billion will only refer to the land. So pasabot na, ten years, kabalo tatanan. Pag humanin ng tambak na, magulat pa ka, blundag pa na si Yuta na, handin mo bantok. Probably the next ten years, wala pa kay building makita diya. How about na the fishermen? Nungutan ako gahapon, ang usap ka mananagat sa luok. Wala sa kabalo, wala sa konsultahan, wala konsultayan komunidad. Nung sa sila, magunsan na sila sa tulok atuig, ka-gupoan ba ng dagat? Pagka mas tulok atuig, magunsan na mapu sila? Asan na sa panginabuhay? Were they consulted? Is there any force to consult? Probably yes. And maybe last point, Your Honor. Now, there's Polichanga. I can't, I never heard Attorney Arbon mentioning about this. The point that ni Attorney Golda. This Polichanga, as early as February 29, 2019, nius mayor nga November 29, November 25, 2019 niya, na dawat ang proposal. But if you look at the agreement of Polichanga na nakuha karoon, napagawa sa publiko, as early as February 29, 2019, kasabot na daan ang Polichanga, o sa ka kompaniya, ang insek kompaniya na moin moin besto kwarta, moin mutukod anang atuang 174 hectares. Then it was even revised in February, February 2020. Oh, twenty, yes, twenty twenty. Now, katungus sa'yo, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. Now, wala dinaw sa'yo, ma'am, I was a little bit silly to you. Polichanga, for everybody's consumption. And I believe kadaghan na ko na to nakabasa na talang Polichanga na kontrata. Pero kahit ito na ang musab contract, ang musab contract sa, ang musab contract sa atuang dagat na reclamation project is actually Polichanga. It is a Chinese investor. Ang pangutana karoon, nagkasabot ng mangani diya sa February 29, 2019 na kontra, twenty twenty, twenty twenty na kontrata. Si Polichanga o si EM Cuervo, nga naman nga si mayor, kabalo man sa transaksyon, nga nung umanag ipibaloo o gibutang sa tungkol data, na kaya na usap ka insek na kompaniya, ang moin moin best ani. Why is this hidden from us? There are a lot of things that were hidden from us that we ought to know and we only knew it from outside people and not from the government. And you see there, muna, muna makainu na ko rin nga, tumungtak rin nga, we're in good faith. According to Attorney Arbon, who's a good friend, and I know his integrity. But I'm sorry, in this case, there's just a lot of questions to ask that the government has to answer to the people. Si Polichanga, tinuod o sa ka insek, dili pwedeng mangkontratas Dumagate. Sa ilang agreement diya, claro kayo gibutang nga, siyemusab contract. Yet in our JVA, dili pwedeng diligan ni pick-up license. Yet why are we allowing this? I think that's the older one, ma'am. The older contract. That is solidly amended, MOU. So muna nga makainu ko nga, why is the mayor hiding all these things from us? Maybe he's even hiding this from the council. Kaya na, that's April 29, 2019. And if you look at the provisions there, na pag, ma'am, paliw ko sa page two ano, ma'am. Na pa nakabutang, ano na, the previous page. If you look at that contract, kung tanaw mo din maayaw, it even says, they are, ako lang basahon ni Pursona. Polichanga, the contract shall be executed between the client and EMCI, so ang client and Dumagate. Wala sa subcontractor agreement of the subcontract work shall be executed between Polichanga and EMCI, ang EM Cuervo, within thirty days from the issuance of the notice of award by the client.
Two minutes left, Counselor Urbas.
Thank you, Your Honor. And worse is that, knowing now that ang musab contract ani, si Polichanga, tipong diya puntang ngayon nga, mayor, mukalma daw ta gamay ani, kung sa man tinuod ba ni Polichanga ng musab contract ani, muii mo kasabot? Di ba ta mukalma gamay ano? Di ba ta malarmo ano? And look at the confidentiality agreement in number four. If we read, if we read the confidentiality agreement, wala ngayon sila, kami secretor na tungbo ha? Secretor na to ni EM Cuervo? Both parties agreed to keep all information made available to themselves or anyone representing them confidential. A party must not reveal, make, close or allow any public pronouncement, press release or public statement of any kind to be made about this MOU or the participation of any of the parties in this bid without prior consent of the other. Confidentiality clause will remain in effect even if termination, cancellation or completion of this memorandum of agreement occurs. Nganong kitago na nila, nganong secretor na, probably this is now the question why, this is now the reason why we need to review the MOU with Polichanga, EM Cuervo, and give the chance to the people to make their own position. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor Urbas. Counselor Sagarbaria.
Madam Chair, since mine is a totally different topic, I would just like to yield to whoever is after me. Maybe you have mine on the last since it is not in relation to this subject.
All right, next in the list is Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you also sa presentation ni Madam Golda Binhamin. And of course, ang presentation po, on the side sa atuang gobyerno with Attorney Arbono. Daghang kayang salamat. Madam Chairman, grabe kayo ang naitabuo sa social media, no? There were character assassination, personal attacks. Sakto diyang gi-ingon ni Attorney Arbon, tawagun kagyawa, tawagun kagbutol. Now, akong question, naabay butol nga negosyante? Naabay butol nga perti kaasinsado, nga gikan sa kapubrihon, nga ang ako ang pagkuha sa college, usa ako ka-scholar? Dili ako academic scholar, but scholar ko in the sense sa university volleyball team and university dot stroke. Ako gitong giduha, Madam Chair, para ragad ko maka-graduate because my father died when I was twelve years old and I was the youngest. So grabe gitang hagol sa akong edukasyon. Ang ako lang, Madam Chairman, kita public officials, kami public officials, but that doesn't mean nga babuyon ta sa social media. Dunay characterization nga shame on you nga gibutahan ka. Kasi ang mungibuhat, nga nung instead nga iyong i-question, ang amuang action dinhe, ang amuama noong personal mo inyu hanggi atake. Sayop, kamuro bay taga Dumagate? Dili. I am a graduating counselor. Three-termer counselor, muwet na ako ang term next year, Madam Chairman. And I'm proud to say, sa akong paglinggo dinhe, daghan ta kayo o nahimo, Madam Chairman. Daghan tag nabuhat. Konsus ko sa akong sweldo because I am aware nga ang katauhan mo ay gasweldo na ko. And even ganyan dinhe sa session host atong record, makita niya diya, wala ko ni avail o sick leave or whatever leave, whatever benefits, ke gusto na ko almost every day na adri. Mas kipagge covid ko, ge covid daga online ta, wapa na humag ko covid. Because importantin ako ang public service, ang sweldo konsus ko. Muna, Madam Chairman, na hinumdum ko sa atuang Ella, executive legislative agenda. Milinkod ko tamas ginhawa. Asa ang ubang counselors nag-shopping sa Ayala. Dili ko in anak, Madam Chairman. I think ang nabili nito, it was counselor per di set and even the rest, but ang ako ang mga lady, ko counselors, na nga wala nga, even pag pictures pagani, gehulat sila, ugasa sila. Pangitaon sila, ugasa sila, dili ingon anak sila ni Ramon. I'm sorry, ni Adi or ni Shem nga, singking nga sila maoy mga trolls. Kedagan kayong trolls karoon. Uska million pamuka bashers, dili good go affectado. If you're going to check other bashers, wala. Trolls. Wow, i-pick up ng tools ni President Pilitertes, something like that, na na di is Dumagate. Kaya wala activity ang FB, so plano ragad kayo, Madam Chairman. Na character assassination na gyud, maoraguy ilahang tuyo. Ayaw po mo pag-ingon anak, kadi dili po na sakto. Even ganyan ang mayor. Ni sikay o eroplano, gehatagan o malis ang iyang pagbiyahe. Asa walang pamilya sa mayor. Tuwa sa Manila. Dili ba di ay shop pwede, ngularga siya Manila during weekends. Ni balik o lunas para siyahang duty. Unya, wapa mo kahi balon, inyong ipicturan ang mayor, wala'y bodyguard, siya na gyud taon, usah. Inyong gibutang sa kuwan, social media, dayo, kasi mahitabuo, pwede po sila ng mayor, kaya wala siya bodyguard. Kaya maski ingon anak na ang status sa atong mayor, simple ra kayo. And I'm just, Madam Chairman, in my life, I don't want to blame you. I don't want to blame you. It's a job that you're doing. It's a job. The Counselor Ramon. I'm a member of the council. I'm a member of the council because I want, I want to return back. It's a thank you. I'm grateful for what I did. I'm grateful, Madam Chairman. I'm not afraid. I'm very proud of my salary. Even my salary, Madam Chairman. In my mind, I'm giving members of the council 435 sacks of gas. I'm sharing my salary because I want to help. I'm not ashamed of my personal talents in hospitals. Madam Chairman, I'm sorry. I'm straightforward. But yes, the statement of Attorney Arbon, I can look in your eyes. I don't want to be angry. I don't want to be angry. I'm not afraid of social media. I'm not afraid of the police. I don't want to be angry. None, Madam Chairman. As a public servant, I'm proud. I'm alive, my citizens. But I'm proud, Madam Chairman, in my work in politics, I don't want to be angry. I'm a volunteer. Now, on the issue of the project, Madam Chair, I'll say, I don't want to be denied a contract with EM cuerpo. I don't want to be rejected. I don't want to be rejected. The MOU is a pass. They're using it. It's a safety valve on the part of the city government. Madam Chairman, I'm glad you have the environmentalists. I'm happy. We have the former president, Mr. Dr. Angel Alcala, and the former president, Ben Malayang. Madam Chairman, because they're dirty. It's not fair. They're trying to pass it on to people. And I would like to flash this document, Madam Chairman. And I hope I can copy the document. It's not a document. I'll read it, ma'am. The document says, "The SMC site SRP Cebu", or "South Properties", "South Road Properties in Cebu". Madam Chairman, it's approved. I'll read it. Ma'am, hi, Dev. I saw the signatures of Dr. Angel Alcala as DNR secretary. And there's the signature of Sir Ben Malayang. Can you open, ma'am? I don't want to read it. I'm not afraid. Please, you can read it. But on number 14, let's start at number 12. It's approved by Dr. Malayang and Dr. Alcala. Number 12, proper zoning of industries located in the reclamation areas should be subject to the EIA requirement as explained by Attorney Arbon, Madam Chairman. Environmental compliance certificate for the information is here. I copy it. Please, I'll take it. Then number 13, 10% of the total reclaimed area shall be reserved, developed, maintained as open space for trees, parks, and other purposes in conformity with the zoning regulations. Trees and other vegetation shall be planted in each block. In the reserved open spaces and along roads to maintain soil stability, prevent flooding as well. I'm happy with the speech of Counselor Iramis regarding the concern about flooding, Madam Chairman. And number 14, the quantity of coral reefs. I'm very glad you have the environmentalists. I'll pay attention to section 14. I'll copy it. The quantity of coral reef mangrove species and trees to be affected by the dredging and excavation for filling materials and reclamation operations shall be replaced with the same quantity of artificial reef and equivalent five mangrove propagiles or seedlings for every displaced mature mangrove stand or trees. Artificial reefs shall be established in offshore areas surrounding the entire perimeter for the reclamation island. Mangrove plantations shall be established in suitable sites nearest to the reclamation island. Reforestation shall be carried out in affected forest areas. Coastlines and riverbanks affected by the quarrying activities shall be restored to its original conditions. Number 15, hi, Dev. An environmental guarantee shall be set for the rehabilitation of any environmental damage caused by the implementation of the project, compensation to persons adversely affected by the project, and sponsorship of monitoring activities within 90 days of a receipt of monitoring activities within this ACC. The amount of the funds and mechanics of this disbursement shall be determined by EMV and MDP. EMV. Okay, number 16, Madam Chairman. Can you see? I'm not afraid, Madam Chair, because I'm afraid. A multi-partite monitoring team shall be organized prior to the implementation of the project to the compose of representatives from the DNR, composing EMV and DNR Region 7, NGOs, and MCDP, that is the corporation in Cebu, and she regularly monitor the implementation of the project. Next, Madam Chairman, this is the environmental compliance certificate approved by Dr. Angel Alcala as DNR secretary and with the signature of then-president Ben Malayang, Madam Chairman. And this is a template, a document which we are going to follow in case, in case, if you apply it for reclamation, it's not possible. I'm very glad you have the authority. You can judge even though the leaders of the environment are themselves approved of the SMC site to a big project in Cebu. The area is approved. Imagine, Madam Chairman, that is more than 300, more than our proposed project here in Dumaguete. Double the number. Even though they're not themselves, they're approved. What is it? None of it is passed. In my life, it's a joke. Relax, you. You're listening to your own voice. You're listening. It's a joke in Dumaguete. It's not possible. You're applying it again. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Next is Counselor Mashon.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Would you like to speak before Counselor Mashon, Counselor Sagarbaria?
Mine is a different topic.
I yield to Counselor Sagarbaria.
Before I would speak, I would like to ask if it is on the range of the same topic because I have another topic.
Is it in relation to the 174 reclamation?
Yes, somehow, Madam Chair.
So you yield to Counselor Mashon. Counselor Mashon is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Personally, Madam Chair, I think that as public officials, it is not up to us to ask people to temper down because it is up to us to make the people understand. It is up to us to relay the people the proper information that they deserve. So as those who have bad intentions, that we believe those who have bad intentions surrounding us will not capitalize on issues. It is quite disturbing for me, Madam Chair, that with all that's happening now, it costs a lot of, I mean, it is even widening social divide, which is really disheartening on my part. It is disturbing to hear that the clamor of the youth is irrelevant. It is disturbing to hear that the youth is misinformed. It is disturbing to hear that the youth is tagged as anti-development. I am speaking today in my personal capacity to somehow give an assurance to the youth who are opposing the project that all of your sentiments are valid, all of your concerns are valid. Experts have spoken, and I know that your claims are all evidence-based and that you are not misinformed and that you are only concerned of our marine-protected areas. You are only concerned of our future that you believe is at stake. It is also my duty to carry all of your voices to bring in this government. If you want to ask the question, ask, ask, or ask the people who don't know, I mean, the people who don't have, who don't have a answer, I will do my very best to give answers to these questions and in my own capacity will help in relaying these significant information to all of you. And I just do hope that all of you will understand the weight of my responsibility. If you're ready, because I am in a position where I can't just stay on one side. Because when we go in the community, there are those who are in need of enlightenment. And being able to understand the entire context for me personally, I hope you will not misinterpret this. Being able to understand the entire context, being able to understand the disadvantages of this project and the advantages of this project is for me is such a privilege. And I just hope that as youth of today, we must use that privilege to help those who are lost, to help those who are who are lost. I just hope that we stop resorting to personal attacks because it's not healthy anymore. It doesn't speak of us as gentle people of Dumaguete. I am appealing to all of you to stick with the issues and that we must always come from a point of understanding, not hatred. To end, Madam Chair, I would like to sincerely apologize for my prolonged silence because, of course, I don't want to speak up if I don't have enough knowledge. Because I don't want to harm anyone. I don't want to hurt anyone when I speak up for this issue. I want to give an equal representation of all the youth in Dumaguete City because that is what they all deserve. And if when time comes, public consultations and so on and so forth, I encourage all of the youth to take part and participate. Let's not focus ourselves only on social media. If you're ready to hear from the people who are in the streets, which I think that most of our members of the chairperson are concerned of, we must provide an equal opportunity for both to be heard. Because at the end of the day, as your youth representative, I am also concerned of your welfare. And I do always believe in the legal maxim which says, "Salus obere li est supremalex". The welfare of the people is the supreme law. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Mashon. Counselor Bandal is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Earlier, I asked for a copy of the presentation of Attorney Benhamin, Madam Chair. And all I can say, Madam Chair, is that with all the points raised in today's session, for me, it became evident that these matters should be discussed further. And the manifestations, or should I say the items raised by our speakers should seriously be addressed and considered, Madam Chair. That's all, Madam Chair.
Next is Counselor Perdizas. You're recognized, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank our esteemed guests this morning, Attorney Golda and Attorney Mani Arbon for sharing with us their respective points of view on this subject, on this matter. It is, for me, a good start when we get people to enlighten us more on what this is all about. Madam Chair, I guess I am one with all the other members of the city council that I personally do not take delight. I do not take pleasure in the bashing, name-calling, and all those other things that we now see in social media. I do not take pleasure when I come across any negative insinuations to any member of the council, whether minority or majority. As a matter of fact, I do not take pleasure when I see comments of our fellow citizens in their own capacities bashing each other back and forth. I guess as public servants, we have a higher limitation to absorb bad comments and bullying. But among people, among our friends, among our citizenry, this, I definitely do not take pleasure in. Madam Chair, I listened to our good city legal officer, and I was delighted to hear his ending words. What he assured this body that nothing has been signed by the mayor with regards to the MOU. The letter of intent has not been forwarded to the PRA. And from what I read from him and what he said is, the city administration is now reaching out to our citizenry to inform and to get comments, suggestions, whether in favor and to get comments, suggestions, whether in favor for or against the proposed project. I delight in this. Because, for me, this is a good step forward. For me, this is now, there is now a possibility of a restart button. A restart button wherein, prior to July 7, maybe we will be given a chance as a city of gentle people to go about this issue in a civil, intellectual, and open discussion. Not only among public official, but most especially by our citizenry. I see the possibility of a restart button so that whatever wounds may have been opened these past two weeks may heal and we again unite as one people. I see the possibility of a good discussion on this. Madam Chair, and a lot for me falls on the shoulder of our good mayor. If he feels that we should indeed have a restart button, he can. There are ways of putting these past two weeks behind us and starting anew. Without changing points of view, but at least exchanging those points of view in a civil, comprehensive matter. Madam Chair, that is what I take from today's Privilege Speech section, the possibility of a restart button. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, Counselor Sagar Baria, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, no, I would still, I would like to thank both seekers, uh, speakers who talked a while ago, uh, Mom Benjamin and our city, uh, legal officer Manny Arbonne to enlighten us in the council additional pros and cons, especially when it comes to the project. Um, Madam Chair, there has been a lot of hushing and just mention by our colleagues, even by my friend Counselor Perdizas a while ago, na I am not happy about. But there is just one thing, na muhangi ugukos mga katauhan, na do not do it again. It is the posting of where us public officials, especially where mayor, where mayor is at the time. Because ako, I can handle comments, I can handle bashing. Pero, once you start putting people on security risk, na unsa'y mahitabo, that is even for me beyond, beyond na'ju na crossing the line. Ako, I don't want anything to happen to anybody of us, especially the mayor. Sa katungang pagpost, kuyaw-kuyaw gitu, Madam Chair. I don't like na anay mo bunal niya because of lack of information, na ay mo hapak or something. It is, this could happen because this is a heated debate. And there is lack of information. It's not, it's basically incomplete information. So na'ju ni siya'y makasakit, may maglagot. And above all things, uh, we were all once friends and I don't want anything to happen to all of us. So muhangi ugukos mga katauhan. You can bash, you can comment, you can say your pros, you can say your cons. Pero, hangi ulang ko, do not post where we are, where we're going. Kay, that is already a security risk to all of us. And I'm speaking not only for myself, but to everyone here, especially the mayor. Now, Madam Chair, um, my privilege speech would be about the MUCQ going to our GCQ. I would like to say, no, because, na model magunikabahin sa ato ang, uh, 174. Uh, I would like to say thanks, especially to Doctor Atala, to the nurses, to our health marshals, and to everybody that worked hard. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't an easy task. As being the chairman of health, I also had to see and undergo and to double-check to make sure that everybody is working at their maximum capacity. And, of course, Madam Chair, that is when, uh, sometimes, na we really have to put ourselves and our, uh, beliefs in front and have it a step down. It is never easy, no, to decide or to support an unpopular decision. What happened was, there was a pursuan even by my friends, some business owners, na to open up Dumaguete. They talked to me and said, na sobra na'ti and everything. And I, as being the chairman of health, I had to talk to Doc Tala. So Doc, unsa mani, because they have already been complaining. News Doc, check, the, the nurses are already overwhelmed, the doctors are overwhelmed. Muhangi uku ni muna appease them, then we will try our best, na mahimo tag GCQ. So I went here in the council, stood my ground. Even though I am also a business owner, I took and did the unpopular decision. And I am very happy, no, na even though what I really, I'm very happy that what I wanted to happen, na ba GCQ balik ang Dumaguete City happened. So with that, Madam Chair, again, I would like to thank all the health officers and also utmost pasensya sa mga business owners and thank them for adhering and following the protocols of Dumaguete City. That's all, Madam Chair.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Sagar Baria. I see, I saw Counselor Mashon raising his hand earlier. You have already availed the privilege hour. May I know what your purpose is?
Um, I would just like to add something, Madam Chair.
With the indulgence of Counselor Amores?
Ah, yes.
Okay, anyway, you were not able to finish your fifteen minutes. I'll give you five minutes.
Yes, um, this is just very short, Madam Chair. I think right now, I just have to really say this in front of the public with all might and courage, that I just really have to stay true to what people have known me before. That always and always, I am for sustainable development, I am for the environment. But just like what I have promised with all of you earlier, that I have to give a fair representation of the youth. I have to be equal in giving representation of the youth. So that is exactly why I am encouraging all people to enlighten those who we believe are lost. So, this is just to clear everything, that I would just like to reiterate, na I am really for sustainable development. I am for the environment. And on a personal note, not as an SK president, from the bottom of my heart, I could not support this reclamation, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I, I hope I'm not hurting anyone when I say this. But if I could no longer give the representation, the federation that I represent, I am willing to take, I am willing to file, I am willing to go and leave, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, and I hope that gives all of us a peace of mind.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Mashon. Counselor Amores is recognized. And then last speaker. We have consumed our entire morning for privilege hour. We're supposed to limit it to an hour.
Uh, I move that we extend, um, our privilege hour, Madam Chair, for ten minutes.
I'm sorry, ten minutes?
Ten.
Okay, there's a motion to extend our privilege hour for another ten minutes. That, that would include the speech of Counselor Amores and your speech, Counselor Lintorio?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Alright. Any second? Any second to the motion for extension? Okay, there's a motion to extend for ten minutes?
For ten minutes, Madam Chair.
Ten minutes?
Second year.
Julie seconded. Objections? There being none. Motion to extend is carried. Go ahead, Counselor Amores. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good noon.
Almost noon. And sa mga membersa, sa city councils, sa mga invited guests, and especially to Attorney Benjamin, na na karuno, the former, na nagdala sa kumelek. Lain-lain na'tu, tagsa-tagsa na'tu, lahin o pananawno. Some says no, ang upan po't yes. But I'm humbly appealing to everybody, na na'tay kagalingong pananaw, na'tay kagalingong desisyon sa tong kagalingon na din, atong gituhuan, na kanima ayaw. If other people, people says no, then atong respetaran. Kay, sila nagatuo, ngangusa kapreklimasyon, na buhaton diya sa boulevard, base sa iladili mayo sa atong kalikupan. And other people says yes. Because nagtoo, usako na'ana, na nagtoo nga ma-elevate, musaka ang atong panginanglan, ngari sa Dumaguete. Balikun, sa historian, ni historian, ni Counselor Ramon, na three term, three terms na siya as city councilor. Ako, last termer as barangay captain o barangay mutong. Sa gisulod ako, sa barangay mutong, gikan sa mga previous barangay captains. Sa akong pagnahun, pa manahun sa paglingkod way back to 2011 until now, diliggin ako madanat ang mga proyekto, na gadi, gadiin, gadi man sa mga tao sa akong barangay. Diliggyo kaya. Reason why? Kulang-kulang ang kwarta ngari sa syudad. Unsa'y buhaton sa barangay. Mga ayaw, magama ogre solution sa city, magama ogre solution sa probinsya, oggnadto sa kongresista na din nagdala sa segundo distrito. In my last term karun, diliggin ako, nahitabo o dilaggin ako makaya ang tanan. And wala'y usa, na pipila. Wala'y usa, na taas o gran kama official na giningon mangita tagpaagi. Na kinitang dang problemaha sa 30 ka barangay sa Dumaguete. Masulbad na'tu, pinagi sa pipila katuig, or mangita ta, na din ang inyo project mamaterilize with your term. Now, fortunately, ni abut ni siya na proposal, ngita wag reclamation. Ako nagatuo, and not limited sa mga mitigations na buhaton ni Ani. Nagatuo ko, na usakanis makatabang sa atong komunidad, na ay disadvantage, na ay advantage. Diya, ang disadvantage o advantage, munay tuki on sa sakto nga lugar, og sa sakto nga ahinsya. And when it, when it comes to pamalawod, ato po ng hisgutan, na'tu sa sakto nga lugar, og sa sakto nga ahinsya. Kay kung magsigilanta, og lalis, away, and maabut sa panahon nga mula personal na ako ramay muslim dery, ang ayan ba as Christian and Muslim, um, magisigit tag away? Wala'ta kabalu kalus ata mawala. Yes, accountable ta sa komunidad, accountable ta sa guberno, pero mas accountable ta na'tu sa gino. So hopefully, hangi'ta, kung ang gi explain ni Attorney Golda, or gi explain ni Attorney Arbonne, kung pwidi abuton sa usa, kaopisina, usa ka ahinsya, para makita og unsa ang ayan, ang ayan ba ipadayon o dili, then feel free atong buhaton na siya. Hinaut, na tagsa-tagsa, kung magsigit tag ingon mas mayo, na ay kalinaw. Hinaut, na tagsa-tagsa na'tu ang kalinaw, magagikan ka na'tu matagusa. Ato ipadayag, ang atong sentimento og panghunahuna sa sakto nga lugar. And mulak dip ko gamay, Madam Chair, katunggisulting nga ingon, na anciliary business rabay naa, kung tanawun ninyo sa section three of the proposed memorandum of understanding, makita ninyo tanan diya, kung unsa'y scoop sa sulod, sa usa karreklimasyon. So hopefully, diligman ko abugado, hopefully, kani usa kaproblema karong diya tubang na'tu sa dakbayan sa Dumaguete. Mahimong, um, mahatagan og kalinaw, mahatagan og tubag, kung ang ayan ba, or dili na'tung pagabuhaton dery sa atong syudad. And if, kung dili na'tu ang ayan, buhaton kani usa karreklimasyon, maghinaut pugo sa pipila. Not only for elected officials, not limited to elected officials. Help us, na matanaw na'tu ang mga problema tanan sa dakbayan sa Dumaguete for the thirty barangays. Na matarget, matarget na'tu for how many years na marisolbar ni siya. Sa pagtapos na'tu pagsturya, Madam Chair, sa tanang infrastruktura na buhaton, mamalaman, um, masabasa sa dagat, na sa tubig man, na agoy madaut, or na agoy maygo na environment concern, na agoy environmental concern. Madaku man, um, magamay. Dagang salamat, um, may muntag.
Counselor Lintorio is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What was mentioned a while ago by, um, Counselor Amores is indeed, um, legitimate, Madam Chair. And I have listened also to the concerns of the members prior to this, um, representation speech, Madam Chair. This issue indeed is a very significant issue that would mold the future of Dumaguete. And we know for a fact the magnitude of the project. We know the ma, the magnitude of impact that it could probably have for the next generations. We understand, Madam Chair, that we have been elected by the people. And in fact, we live in a government governed by democratic processes and we are voted by the people to represent them. It's just so sad, um, Madam Chair, and to my distinct colleagues, that on social media, there is, let's say, a level of chaos. Why? Because we tend to disrespect each other's position, whether you are an anti or a pro 174 reclamation. To me, on a personal note, I have been elected by the people. And through this forum, because some individuals cannot avail of this specific forum that we are having now, they express their sentiments, they express their opinions, they express their expertise through social media. But for them, it is the best forum that they could probably reach out to the members of this council and to the executive.
Osahay lang good, Madam Chair, dili malikayan, na ma-misinterpret na'tu ang unsa, ang ganahang mensahing ay patud sa ato ang mga stakeholders. Personally, Madam Chair, osahay sakit paminaon ang mga historya, ang mga post which are basically below the belt na ang oban. But we are a public office. That is incumbent upon us, nga maka damatog inana ang mga comments. But please, let's not take that negatively. We take that as a challenge, as also an eye-opener. Tabadu, na ay mga concerns, legitimate concerns, na wala na'tu ma-address. Di man pumutuo, Madam Chair, nga gayaw-yaw running mga tao. These individuals are professionals. These individuals, no matter unsa ilahang posisyon sa community, their sentiments matter, especially that we are dealing with a project that could highly impact the future of the city. the future of the city of Dumagate. Ang ako lang yo hangyo nga we respect each other. Ako personally, I may have voted to grant the honorable, the authority to sign that memorandum of understanding. And as what we have been mentioning, it's part of the process. There would be a contract that would later on crafted to suit or to govern the agreement between the city government and the proponent. Ang ako lang hangyo, let the process take its toll. Kami, I will not speak on behalf of the members of the council. I'll speak personally as a member of this august body. Gabasa'ta, naminaw'ta sa mga sentimiento, whether asan na siya na'y mga private messages on public forums, on social media. Let it be noted that these concerns are taken seriously. This issue is a very serious issue. Again, we have, each everyone, each and every one of us has this intergenerational responsibilities. Not for ourselves, probably not for our children, but for the generations to come. But we could not also do away no concerning ang atwa pong mga katauhan nga, the kinanglan po na niya mga klasi sa mga proyekto. Lisad kayo ang sitosyon sa kada member sa konseho, to be honest. Kay we have to deal things, we have to weigh things. And also to be honest, in dealing with these issues, comments, posts on social medias by experts do help us have an informed decision on the matter. Ang hangyo lang yo ako, dilig lang'ta ah mag-personally good na to the point nga looy po ang atong obang mga kaoban. At the same time po, ako po'y remind ang atong mga kaoban lang po na this is part of the political process. We have a democratic government. People speak on whatever forum nga ilang nafeel nga maoy best nga maka-reach out sila sa atwa. Because definitely, we are a democratic and a part of a republican government nga sila man ang nagbutang na'to dery. Muna nga sa mga pros o sa mga anti, let's just respect each other. And let it be noted nga naaba na sa TV, naaba na sa social media, naaba na sa private messages, mga post diya, all these concerns are duly taken noted especially by this representation for me to make an informed decision on this matter.
Madam Chair,
Yes, Councillor.
I was just informed by Councillor Elma- Elma Ko that she wants to avail of the privilege are through cellphone.
Yes, I also received a text from her because we got disconnected in our remote video conference. If there are no objections, the chair would allow Councillor Elma Ko to speak via phone patch. Go ahead, Councillor Elma Ko.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you for this opportunity for me to add my privileged speech despite being on maternity leave. However, it has been days since this issue blew up especially during the first time it was presented, the issue was presented here in the county, just days before.
Hello?
beside hello?
Yes.
Yes. Nakarunoh ra ting.
Nakarunoh ra.
Hello? Okay. I just can't sleep on this matter and decided to temporarily cut short my maternity leave and air out my sentiments and my ah decision on this matter regarding the reclamation project. This has been the first time since weeks of being on leave that I'd be able to speak about this. And I thank the president chair and my for giving me this opportunities to give out my opinion regarding this. And I also thank Attorney Golda Benhamin for enlightening not just me but also the citizens of Dumagate City as well as the rest of the council and those present in the plenary. Um, sigi rata, eh when we work, sigi rata o'g encourage sa atong mga tao na magpakabana, magpakabana sa ato ang mga ah surrounding, sa ato ang mga pangadlaw-adlaw nga dealings with other people. And um, diing Dumagetan yo's we have, we can contribute in our government dealings. And I thank Attorney Golda Benhamin for sparing her time and effort for us to understand truly what this project is all about. I thank my colleagues also for giving Attorney Benhamin the opportunity to be heard because maayok kanina ang maismais sa pag-explain what the purpose is. And I also thank my uh, our city hall officer on explaining but there are, there were certain points that were not clearly um understood since it was too technical for an ordinary.
Hello?
Hello.
Sorry. And um, Madam Chair, um, I just I just want to say that this project may be about development. I'm not saying that I'm not, I'm not pro-development but together with my, the other members of the minority, we are pro to responsible development and informed development. So going back sa atong akong ingon na pagpakabana, let us listen to our people. We have been saying and others have been saying to listen to the government first. I, it is ano for me, we should listen to the people first. We are beholden to our citizens. They are, we are mandated and we are beholden to them. That's why all of us are here in the council because of them. Let us listen to them. And lastly, Madam Chair, I am one with Councillor Fardisus in saying that this is not too late for all of us and especially to the other members of the council. There, I hope this would, this may be a reset button especially the statement of Attorney Arbon. May that be a reset button for us to start over and be one with our people in deciding for the future of Dumagate. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the people manapakabana ang inproyektoha. Sadang salamat. Good morning.
Thank you, Councillor Elma Ko. It's already 12:15 in the afternoon. What's the pleasure of the body? Do we have urgent matters to discuss? Can we read business for the day, Secretariat? Yes, Councillor Amores.
Can we change the, what? Order of the business, Madam Chair? Can I cater my supplemental budget?
That's under
I move to change.
Under business for the day. Can we quickly tackle one and two?
Yes.
Councillor Amores. Anyway, this will be referred to the Committee on Environment. That we have, we are in receipt of the letter from the Diocese of Dumagate dated July 12, 2021, expressing their opposition to the proposed 174 hectare reclamation project and the letter from the People's Development Council of Dumagate City regarding the 174 hectare reclamation project. The chair will refer these letters or position papers to the Committee on Environment for appropriate action. Item number three, Councillor Amores, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ma'am. May I move to approve the supplemental budget of number one of Barangay Luok appropriation ordinance number one, series of 2020 in the amount of 161,004 pesos and 88 cents. I so move.
There is a motion by Councillor Amores for the appropriation of 161,004 pesos and 88 cents as supplemental budget number one of Barangay Luok, duly seconded by Councillor Patrimonyo. Comments? Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is carried. Other matters?
Your Honor.
Councillor Erbas is recognized.
Um, in view of the um, the approval of those items in the previous session, Your Honor, with regards to the no objection issued by this council, Your Honor, on the, on the application for a PRA, Your Honor, authority to reclaim the lands in front of the city, may I move for reconsideration, Your Honor, on that item, Your Honor? Considering on the ground that no consultation has ever been made, no consultation was ever made ah to the public and therefore, the council has no basis for such a no objection certification, Your Honor. I so move, Your Honor.
There is a motion for reconsideration.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Arames. Discussion? May inquire from the Secretariat whether the motion for reconsideration by Councillor Erbas is in accordance with our internal rules?
Madam Chairman, I would like to present the internal rules, the pertinent provisions of the internal rules regarding filing of motion for reconsideration of the ruling of the chair during the previous session.
Section 46.
The pertinent provision, Madam Chair, is section 45.
Isn't it section 46?
46.
As, yes, Madam Chair, section 46. If I may read it, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Any member who voted with a majority may move for the consideration their own on the same or succeeding session day. Such motion requires the approval of the voting members, abstentions excluded, and shall take precedence over all other questions except motions to adjourn, to raise a question of privilege, and a call to order. Nevertheless, any member may similarly move for consideration of a bill or resolution but only on the basis of a question of law, newly discovered evidence, and/or supervening facts on the same or immediately succeeding regular session.
Councillor Erbas is recognized.
Yes, Chair. Invoking sections 46, second paragraph, Your Honor. Any member may similarly move for a consideration of a resolution ah on the basis of question of law, newly discovered evidence, and/or supervening facts.
What is your basis in your motion for reconsideration?
What was approved by the council, Your Honor, is a no objection certification, Your Honor. Now, on what, on the case of supervening facts, Your Honor, and newly discovered evidence, considering that we were able, we were able to find out that there's no um consultation made ah to the public with regards to this matter, Your Honor. The council cannot easily issue a certificate of no objection because the council represents the people. On that basis, Your Honor, I believe that there is a need for us to conduct a public consultation first so that the council would have a basis in saying that the city has no objection to such application with a PRA, Your Honor. Without, Your Honor, I maintain my motion, Your Honor.
Okay. The chair would like to be clarified first. The motion for reconsideration is not for the three three resolutions issued by the council last week, but only for the no objection resolution. Is that right, Councillor Erbas?
No, Your Honor. I would like to start with that, Your Honor.
Okay, so the current motion now is for the resolution of no objection?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, and your basis is, is it question of law, newly discovered evidence? Supervening facts?
It falls under newly discovered evidence and supervening facts, Your Honor. Because records will show that the council has no basis in issuing a certification of no objection.
Just a query, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councillor Ramon.
Ah, am I correct in saying that any member can move for reconsideration if he favored in the affirmative? And I'd like to check if Councillor Erbas is voting for the affirmative last session, the records of, last session, the records of the council?
Before I recognize Councillor Erbas, we have earlier discussed that his basis is found in the second paragraph of section 46 wherein the rules provide that any member of the council either specifically those who, I think this refers to those who did not vote for the resolution, may similarly move for reconsideration as long as the basis are as follows, question of law, newly discovered evidence, and/or supervening facts.
In that note, Madam Chairman, how would we know that it's a question of law or there will be a newly discovered evidence?
Councillor Erbas, you may answer.
Okay, just for clarification, may I address the question now to the Secretariat? Um, Attorney Tulcidas, do we have on record um supporting documents that would show, that would authorize, that would be the basis for this granting of certificate of no objection, such as public hearings?
Based on the, based on the record, Your Honor, just to answer that question, we do not have any record on that document.
Yes, Your Honor. Considering that is just the immediately succeeding regular session, Your Honor, that cannot be a basis for what we call a newly discovered evidence, Your Honor.
Is that newly discovered evidence or question of law?
Yes. Probably that can also be a question of law, Your Honor, but the law, the question is what law are we referring to?
We don't have new, you don't have new evidence now. The question now is whether it was legal for the council to pass last session the resolution of no objection without public hearing. Can you answer that, Attorney Tulcidas?
Madam Chair, based on the record, we did not conduct any public hearing yet ah for this particular item.
Attorney Tulcidas.
Your Honor, we are acting on this matter based on the request from the Executive Department through the lender of the honorable mayor.
In our previous resolutions of no objection, were we able to to pass a resolution of no objection despite the fact that we did not conduct a public hearing?
Ah, offhand, Your Honor, I cannot answer that question. I need to browse on our records as to our future dealings, as to our previous dealings with ah other matters, Madam Chair.
Councillor Erbas.
Yes, Your Honor. I think this is the first time that we have such a question, Your Honor. Especially that this pertains to a reclamation, an application for reclamation. Now, when you say certification of no objection, ah on what authority are we standing on? Probably the certification of no objection of the council must refer to a no objection of, to whom we represent. We represent the people of Dumagate. And that would mean also that the people's voice, the voice of the people should be heard first and for the council, so that the council can make that intelligent ah position that the city does not object. It's not the council, not the individual. It's not the council, not the individual councillors here can make that manifestation, Your Honor. And that was my position now. Each of these councillors are citizens of Dumagete City. Yes, we are Dumigetanios, but we all represent the people of Dumagete. And therefore, when we say that there's a certification issued by the council of no objection, that means that the representatives have consulted the people whom they have served, they are serving. Thank you.
Okay, so basically, for the information of everyone, there is a pending motion from Councillor Urbas to reconsider the resolution issued by this Sanguniang Panglongsood last session regarding the resolution of no objection to the reclamation, and the basis is question of law. Okay, Councillor Perdizas is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the question at hand is what are the requirements for the council to issue a resolution of no objection? I'd like to find out from our ABC president. I'm trying to remember, back when the landfill was an issue, did not the barangay council of, barangay government of barangay kamanhak conduct first a public hearing in their barangay before they issued a certificate of no objection as far as the barangay level is concerned?
Councillor Amorres, you may answer.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, yes, there was a public consultation, but I could not remember if it is for no objection. I dili ko makasiguro kung for no objection ba'to siya. But, yes, there was a public consultation.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just brought that to light because I'm trying to...
Councillor Perdizas, your voice is muffled. Can you go near the microphone?
Yeah, I was just trying to find out what, at least, what are the requirements for a resolution of no objection? And what I remember is the issue on the landfill, and I think if I'm correct, I do remember that barangay kamanhak conducted a public hearing so that they can issue a certificate of no objection with regards to the landfill project, as mean to say, the public hearing in support of their resolution. So I guess that's where Councillor Urbas is coming from. In the barangay level, they do conduct public hearings before issuance of such resolutions. Just for the information of my colleagues, Madam Chair, thank you.
Councillor Bandal, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is precisely the reason why last week I wanted to defer the voting of this particular item, Madam Chair. And considering the, should they say, matters raised by, or concerns raised by our speakers, I think there's a need to discuss this matter thoroughly and to discuss it further, Madam Chair.
Personally, Madam Chair, I was thinking earlier if perhaps we could reconsider this matter, but I do not think we need more research on this, especially we need to really determine what is the meaning of no objection. So if it is okay with my colleagues, considering the fact that we still need to review what has been, or we need to study what has been earlier elucidated by our invited guests, we temporarily defer this particular matter, Madam Chair, to give time for all of us.
With due respect to Councillor Bandal, we cannot defer the motion for reconsideration because under our rules, we have to, if you look at the second paragraph, the motion for reconsideration can be done only on the same day, okay, or immediately succeeding regular session. So you cannot move for reconsideration anymore next week. This is the deadline today. So it's either we approve it or deny it. So what's the pleasure of the body? There is a pending motion to reconsider the resolution of no objection, duly seconded. Do I hear any comments, other comments? Objections? Okay, there being no objection? Objection to the motion for reconsideration? Yes, Councillor Dentorio?
Madam Chair, this is not an objection, Madam Chair, to the pending motion, just a brief manifestation of this representation, Madam Chair. If you could remember, last week, the good Councillor Bandal and this representation duly proposed that the granting of the authority for the mayor on that certain MOU and those other resolutions that were approved last session, we explicitly offered or suggested that it should be deferred. Now, with this new development, Madam Chair, it is really proper for us to discuss this matter again, because as what I've mentioned a while ago, this is an issue that would affect the future of Dumagete. And owing to the fact that we have letters submitted by certain groups to the Committee on Environment, which definitely are illegitimate concern that this council should consider, then I would say, Madam Chair, that the same motion should be taken consideration by this August body, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other comments before the Chair rules? Okay, there being none, then the motion is carried. Go ahead, Councillor Urbas.
First, I thank the members of the council for reconsidering the action. Second, Your Honor, I move to reconsider the authority granted to the Honorable Mayor by this council to sign the memorandum of understanding, Your Honor, in the previous session, on the ground of question of law. Section 13K of the PPP Code of 2021 provides that all PPP contracts must be signed by the city mayor with prior authorization by the council through a resolution. Now with this, Your Honor, again, the requirement of that authorization, Your Honor, must flow from a public consultation also, Your Honor. In this case, it is my, I would also to invoke section 13L, which states that during the consideration of the draft PPP contract by the Sanguniang Panglongsood, a public consultation shall be conducted explaining the PPP project, PPP contract, accountability mechanisms, depth into the PPP agreement, the benefits and costs of the PPP project, among other relevant matters. With that, Your Honor, to give way to the clamor of the public, Your Honor, no matter how small they are to the eyes of the city government, may we allow them to be heard, Your Honor, on this matter the way we allowed the previous motion? And with that, Your Honor, I move for reconsideration of the action of the council, Your Honor, as earlier manifested.
Can you restate your motion, Councillor Urbas?
I move to reconsider the authority granted to the Honorable Mayor to sign the joint venture agreement, or also known as the memorandum of understanding, Your Honor.
Based on question of law also?
Based on question of law, Your Honor.
And you say...
Particularly section 13K and L of the Public Private Partnership Code of 2021, Your Honor.
Madam Chair, comment, Madam Chair? Before I recognize Councillor Ramon, is there any second to the motion?
Second.
There is a motion duly seconded. Councillor Ramon is recognized.
Madam Chair, we are now reviewing the action of this council, Madam Chairman, because Councillor Urbas is pending out a motion, Madam Chair, to withdraw all our approval on matter of question of law. Let me finish, Councillor Urbas.
I'm just releasing my hand, Your Honor.
I have the floor, Councillor Urbas.
I'm releasing my hand, Your Honor.
I have the floor, please.
You will be recognized later, Councillor Urbas. Councillor Ramon, go ahead.
Now, it's all about question of law, Madam Chairman. Therefore, is it not proper for this August chamber, though we have lawyers, members of this August chamber, is it proper for us to seek the legal advice of our city legal officer, Attorney Manuel Arbon, Madam Chair? That's just a query.
Councillor Urbas, go ahead.
Your Honor, this is a plea to the members of the council, Your Honor, to my colleagues. This is a plea, more than that we are questioning now the resolution we passed on the basis of law. We know that the clamor now is really public consultation. We're not saying that we're turning down finally the authority granted to the Honorable Mayor. Probably there's now, as what was said by Councillor Renz Basion, we have to present to the people the pros and cons of the project. We have to present to them the benefit and the damage it may cause, and to allow the people to appreciate the weight of the project. And as Councillor Dentorio said, the magnitude of effects the project may bring to the city will reverberate through generations. So therefore, we cannot just allow this to be a one-time decision. Why not give the council also a chance to breathe? Kung nagikapuyan na tagkanabang panaway sa mga tao nato, why not ask them to stop by also giving them that chance that they're asking? Ba't sinuukay ka ni negatibo kayong atake sa mga tao is because we're not giving them that chance to be heard. So nga'to larun is, if we want to, if we're asking for, if we're pleading the people nga'ti na mo manawalan mo, di minyo ibash sa kuhan sa Facebook, then maybe this chance of setting aside for now our action might help ease the anger or this aggressive expressions of the people of Dumagete. I think, I assure you, once we do this now, if we set this aside for now, to give the people a chance to speak out about this, or to inform the people, maybe an hour from now, you will never see bashing anymore. We will, let's give people a chance to be friends again. Mura na akong hangyura. So more than a law, Your Honor, a question of law. This is also a question of leadership. This is now a question of who we are representing as a council. So mura na ako hangyura. I can't be sentimental about this, but we love each other. We have been friends, but we cannot be destroyed by this action. Ngaturang katul, uh, aturning buhaton in one time, in one time, and I think we said that, my please, Your Honor.
Okay, there is a pending motion for reconsideration on the authority granted to the Honorable Mayor to sign the MOU, duly seconded. Any other comments? Objections to the ground relied upon by the Mooban? Okay, I see no objections.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be clarified, Madam Chair. What is really the intentions of the Mooban when asking for that reconsideration, especially on the authority? Because all we know that we, if the, yes, the public outcry is for them to be know of the real project. Now, how could we, how could the PRA and the DNR order the public hearing or a public consultation, whether or not the project is socially acceptable to the community?
Councillor Urbas, you may answer.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Anong dumbita ko, maybe this is a simple picture nga na raised ganun ni Councillor Amorres and Councillor Perdizas. When we had that issue, when we wanted to buy the land dito sa Candauay for the relocation of our, what we should have called sanitary landfill, we had a public hearing conducted at barangay kamanhak and barangay Candauay, specifically dito sa housing site just beside the sanitary landfill location. And after that, it was only then that we acted upon our, we acted upon the request of the Honorable Mayor. The mayor went there, defended it, defended the position. We, though as council, went there to support the mayor on that point, on his request. The people eventually understood, and the action was passed by the council. So I think this is now in line of that, on that action. If we can do that in Candauay, why can't we do it now, this time, on this issue in Dumaget City, especially the coastlines, and all those who are now clamoring for a public consultation?
Madam Chair, to add.
I saw Councillor, would you yield to Councillor Perdizas? Okay, Councillor Perdizas, Ramon, and then Patrimonio.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just to add on what Councillor Urbas already said. This is, I think, the clamor of our citizens and our constituents is more like, before you go to PRA, before you go to DNR, come to us first. Seek our advice, seek our opinion. And I guess the motion of Councillor Urbas to, what do you call that? To reconsider, is so that we can now, just like Manny, Attorney Arbon said, we are now starting the consultation process. And I would like to see that we continue this, even before we go to PRA and DNR. We go to the people already. And anyway, like Councillor Urbas said, this is not killing the project. This is not killing the MOU. The MOU can again be reintroduced on a later date for authority when we have already met our constituents and enlightened them with regards to this proposed activity. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Ramon, Patrimonio, and then Arames.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's why I asked, if it's a question of law, what we were approving before during the two sessions, Madam Chairman, last July 7 and July 14, was an MOU document, Madam Chair. It's not the PPP contract. And I would like to ask if, do we have legal basis on this one?
Councillor Urbas?
Yes, Your Honor.
Quickly, before I recognize Councillor Patrimonio and then Arames.
When it comes to the PPP contract, Your Honor, whether we like it or not, the JV now at hand is actually a PPP contract. It speaks of the sharing, it speaks of investments, it speaks of what things, what are the substantial, what are the things that will be put up in the island, and the sharing of the ancillary projects. All these things are considered, our partnership with them. The PPP contract can be interpreted a lot of ways, but how about the council? How do we interpret the PPP contract? Should we interpret it as a joint agreement now that we will undertake this project? That's why we started... That's why we start processing papers? If this is how we understand that the MOU or the JVA is already the PPP contract, then I suggest that let's follow the procedure of consultation. If we don't see that, we cannot insist, but for me, that is itself a PPP contract.
Councillor Patrimonyo?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Uh, can Councillor Arbas lay down the basis that this PPE and this MOU is the same in nature?
Can we request, can we request the secretary to flash the JVA as amended? You would notice that in a contract, there are two, three elements. You have the consent, the subject matter, and consideration. Now, in this contract, if you look at this, this is not only a venture, a preparatory contract, as already well explained by Attorney Golden, maybe I'm reiterating this now for my fellow councillor. This contract is not merely a preparatory contract wherein we agree to process. If you read the contract itself, if you go to the details, ma'am, the obligations of the city, uh, yes, the commitment. If you look at the contents of the agreement, it already speaks of rights on the island. So kana ron yung kano nga, we don't contribute money. That is a part of application. It also speaks of no contribution money in the project itself. And that's the commitment of the PSP. But we initiate all these papers, we even allow people to come, foreigners to come to Dumaguete City, we are the ones who are passing at this next page, ma'am. Look at that. Tama, provide road right of way or easement rights from other parties from the mainland to the project. Nga nung gasturia ng takabas project ng mga hatag tagdala nila pag matabaho sa nito. If this is not the PPP contract, if it's only a preparatory contract, we only talk about anything that has to do with the application until we enter into the, but we never discuss about the project itself. Then you look at all the details. Sige pa, ma'am, sakap pa, ma'am. Look at that. Ensure that all forshore areas shall be cleared of marine structures and other obstruction which may interrupt or in any way interfere with the performance of the work of the project. Why are we talking about the project now? If this is not a PPP project, a PPP contract? Diba? Now, assist PSP in bringing into the country all plant's equipment. Ang tanan lang gamit nga galamitong para sa pagdrading. Atong kitang mapasulod. Why are we talking about all these things kung hindi pali sa mga PPP contract itself? Diba? Kung mamigat ang MOU, it's an understanding that we will undertake this project without any specific agreement yet. But here, we have committed laws as now, kung nakai-violation ano, if hindi kitang tumanani, na'ta penalty pagkahuman. Makabayan batan nila. You go to the penalty clause, ma'am, selalum, ma'am. Pinakilalong yun, ma'am, pinakilalong. You could see, there's the penalty clause. Sige, ma'am, sige pa, ma'am. Sa last, last, ma'am, last. Um. Sige pa, ma'am. There's a penalty clause. Kung vaynay tan na, there'll be a penalty, there'll be a penalty. Asan dong? Sige sao, sakabalik, ma'am. Uh, sige pa, ma'am. Diabetes, uh, now sige pa, ma'am, sakap pa, ma'am. Uh, okay, I think, dala. Decision due to default or breach. Subject to provisions of section, what section is that, ma'am? Ten. On the dispute resolution, either party may rescind this agreement prior to the commission, et cetera. Then it goes with, association of this agreement shall not affect any accrued rights of non-defulting party. So pwede sa mga kabadayan, diba? Kung widrota, kung resinta, then wala, hindi sala nila, they can continue with the project. Diba? And so you get all these provisions. Now, ang question kano is, why are we committing, why are we committing in this document into the project itself if this is not a PPP contract? That's my point, your honor. The executive says this is only a preparatory contract, but it appears that it is not, your honor. I think this was also explained well by Attorney Golden earlier.
Councillor Bandal, uh, Arames, and then Bandal, and then Sagarbaria.
Thank you, madam chair. One of the main reasons kung anong ni motion for reconsideration si Attorney Arbas is based on a question of law. Now, ato ni simplify tanong dilita mo, daw, usaan na mga technicalities sa MOU or JVA. So, iyan reason is, wala public consultation. Sakto na siya actually, because ang atong PPP ordinance garequire man nga tinahanglan ug, um, public consultation. So, madam chair, since ikaw man po'y author sa PPP ordinance, perhaps you can recite the salient provisions nga garequire aning, um, public consultations for unsolicited proposals?
Okay, the chair, it is true that the chair was the author of the PPP ordinance that was approved by everyone without no objection. It is also true that public hearing is required for the approval of the PPP contract. Okay? But I think the issue now is some of the members here, and I think it's the position of the city legal officer earlier, that the MOU is not the PPP contract. Okay? So, that's the legal issue. Whether, or that's the issue, whether the MOU is considered a PPP contract under our PPP ordinance. And if it is a PPP contract, then the required public hearing was not done. If it was not done, then there's a valid point that there's an existing question of law. Councillor Perdices is recognized.
Thank you, madam chair.
Is that in relation to this topic?
In relation to what you just mentioned, madam chair, I totally agree with you. Uh, there are two now points of view. The point of view of the city legal officer, the MOU is not the PPP contract, but as earlier also shared by our guest, that this actually constitutes already a binding contract. And if you can, that the PPP contract can be made in so many ways, like a joint venture agreement or something like that. Meaning to say, a joint venture agreement could be the essence of PPP contract. So, I guess, madam chair, just to say, so it is up to each individual to decide on this matter. If one feels that this MOU is already the PPP contract, so he might be, he might have to take into account the need for a public hearing. If a member, in his view, this is not the PPP contract, it is not that binding and so forth, like what our city legal said, then the question of public hearing might not be necessary. So I guess, madam chair, in support of what you just said, this would be an individual decision on the part of each and every member. Thank you, madam chair.
Councillor Bandal?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councillor Amores?
Madam Chair, kabalo kung nga, napata sa good, um, question of, uh, are we approved for the motion for reconsideration? And I know it will take long for this to discuss. Can we have a recess? Gutom na kayo, and atong mga tabahan ti sa guberno, gutom na po na kayo. And we will take, if we are concursinada gitna to discuss this, obligasyon na to nga mabalik to discuss this in the afternoon. If okay lang, and that is a motion.
What's your motion, Councillor Amores, to take a recess?
Yes, madam chair.
There is still a pending motion. There is a request from Councillor Amores. It's a privileged motion to take a recess, considering that it's already one o'clock in the afternoon. Would you yield to that motion, Councillor Arbas? Yes, Councillor Perdices.
Madam Chair, is a motion for recess a privileged motion or only motion to adjourn? I think, yeah, so, no, the chair just said that your motion for recess is a privileged motion.
Okay, under the parliamentary procedure, it's a main motion, it's not actually a privileged motion. But I think he's making the motion as a personal privilege. I think he's, I'm not sure if he's angry, but we all are. So, yes.
Can I say something?
Councillor Bandal, and then Arbas.
It should have been my turn before, uh, Councillor Amores, madam chair. Uh, madam chair, consistent to my manifestation during the last session, uh, that was, this is actually the reason why I wanted to defer it. Okay? And I can actually see the points of some of my colleagues. Basically, madam chair, my personal opinion, I am of the opinion that withdrawing the motion would basically, uh, give the body time to review all the concerns and manifestations. However, madam chair, hearing from Councillor Arbas, I can understand that these are actually, might be, uh, legal matters, madam chair. And if we're going to deliberate on this now, it would take so much time. So perhaps we can give time for some of our colleagues perhaps to review the concerns of my other colleagues as to the purpose why Councillor Arbas made this motion. So I agree with Councillor Amores, madam chair, that perhaps we can lay this matter on the table and continue discussing this later.
Would you yield to the suggestion, Councillor Arbas?
Um, well, I understand the sentiment of Councillor Bandal, your honor, but how I wish you could have, I think we have deliberated this for weeks now and we already feel the people, your honor. Probably we could have, it would not really hurt anybody in the council, your honor, if we just give people the chance to be heard, your honor. And that's my only sentiment. If we have to go back to this afternoon, I have no problem with that, your honor.
Councillor Sagarbaria, you have the floor.
Thank you, madam chair. I am for, uh, laying this on the table or having a recess first until we meet back two o'clock. Anyway, we are being paid and we should be here the whole day, actually. It is being practiced also before. Um, my question lang is, I want this to be answered. Because usually, uh, for, for a recommendation, no sa to? To change the vote, usually it comes from a majority vote. Uh, now is the first time that I have heard na pwede na di ay for motion for reconsideration if you are not on the yes vote or the affirmative or in the majority vote. I would just like to ask, especially the city legal, about this, on the legality. If it is legal, then I will decide. But as of now, this is the first time that I have heard na for a non-yes vote or a non-majority vote to request for a motion for reconsideration. So.
Okay, there's a motion to recess, but there's a pending motion from Councillor Arbas. What's the pleasure of Councillor Arbas?
Um, it's okay, we, your honor, if we defer this. If the majority, uh, if the council really wishes to do that, your honor.
Okay. Councillor Sagarbaria also manifested regarding his legal concerns about our rules. Would you like to invite a representative from the city legal office?
Or maybe I can just ask him during the break, or invite him this afternoon. Because I just want to know especially on that matter, because I have also experienced this on the board and they said only affirmative or majority vote may call on it. So if it can be changed, then at least I would know, and I would learn something new today. That's all.
Yes. I have manifested earlier that there's a second paragraph to that particular rule and that allows Councillor Arbas to file a motion for reconsideration. But since there is a question regarding the standing of Councillor Arbas to file said motion for reconsideration, although we have approved the first motion already, then, and Councillor Arbas also manifested that he's willing to take a break. We'll come back after, or on two thirty?
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
Okay, let's come back at two thirty in the afternoon. The chair declares a recess until two thirty in the afternoon. Considering that there are eight members present, the chair declares that there's a quorum this afternoon. Let's proceed to the pending items. Councillor Arbas?
Thank you, your honor. Um, uh, to shed light also on the pending motion, your honor, we can also refer to chapter two of the ordinance, our PPP ordinance, your honor, particularly section thirteen, daram. And it speaks of the procedures and PPP contract. The procedures in where the city goes to be able to reach to a, to the project itself. Now, in...
Maybe, may we request, madam chair, that what Councillor Arbas showing, we also flash on screen?
Kindly flash PPP ordinance two thousand twenty-one, ma'am. Let's go to, let's go to chapter three, section thirteen.
Section what?
Chapter three, section thirteen. Yes, ma'am, that one. Now, flash on screen is now the PPP procedures. Thirteen, thirteen.
We can hear you, one five?
One three, that one.
Oh, one three.
That is PPP procedures and PPP contract. So this is a procedure on how to get to a PPP contract. Nowhere in section thirteen does it state that there will be an MOU. What we only have in section thirteen is actually PPP contract once, uh, one PSP qualifies. Okay, so if we go to the next page, wala pa na mga klase-klase, says mga, uh, mga... And here, letter E says, "For joint ventures, rehabilitate, transfer, et cetera." Um, competitive challenge, as if, it goes through, that's one. One way competitive challenge is a solution, is one way of getting to the PPP. If we go down below, uh, if we go to, okay, I, I'm assured this is the one. "If the city opts to select a PSP using either competitive selection or competitive challenge, the city in the competitive selection and competitive negotiation and the PSP in the competitive challenge approach must prepare and submit a feasibility or project study." So that's what they have to do, especially in the PSP side. "The cost of preparing the feasibility and project study may be reimbursed by the winning PSP to the city under the competitive selection mode. All recommendations of the PPP selection committee shall be submitted to the city mayor for consideration and approval. Once approved, all PPP contracts must be signed by the city mayor with prior authorization by the Sangguniang Panusod, in this case, through a resolution." Makita ni mo diha, may does not talk about MOU. After the, after the selection committee goes over the, after the Swiss challenge, what will be created is not actually an MOU, but a PPP contract to be signed by the mayor with the prior authorization of the Sangguniang Panusod. This is what we are doing. And this is what I'm trying to point out. Now, in this aspect, there is now that requirement of a public consultation during the consideration of the draft PPP contract by the Sangguniang Panusod, in this case. "A public consultation or hearing shall be conducted explaining the PPP project, PPP contract, accountability mechanisms, built into the PPP arrangement, the benefits and costs of the PPP project, among other relevant matters." Now, why is that so? That is very important. Before ni Magas Mayor, authority nga mo, mo enter into such a JVA or a PPP contract, you actually first seek the consent of the public. Muna ang na public consultation para makasabot ang mataw, hindi ma, manganga ang mga tao, especially in a project like this big, hundred seventy-four hectares in front of our shores of Dumaguete. Hindi nagwata ma compare ni siya atong key sa Cebu, recognition, kailan sa ilaha diya. Dumaguete City is Dumaguete City Boulevard. Dumaguete City facing the east is not, uh, the kind of it. Dumagete City facing the east is not, uh, the kind of commission you have in Cebu. Sumunang alisugya't iikomparar siya because this is our pride. Dumagete City's Boulevard, Dumagete Shores is a pride of Dumagete. So we cannot easily compare. Ang ato ang gusto ko rin is, do we need to consult the people of Dumagete? Kung okay ba sila na, and that's what the procedures require. Ah, ambot kung asa ang MOU diya, wala may MOU gani. Sumunang ako lahan niyo sa atong kauban, na it is possible. At the end of the day, it will not be Attorney Arbon who will be deciding on this. He is for, ay ano, if we represent him now, he will be for the, the, the act, the previous action. Di ko na siyang move against, kitungun nga, siya may kuwan, siya may gamaan eh. Siya may kadevelop sa kuwan, proposal. But if we want really an objective person to explain this to us, let's get somebody who is not biased for now, I mean biased for the project. So ang ako lahat rin is, even among us, especially we have law, a lot of lawyers in the council, I hope that this can make sense to all of us. Ang ato ni pa nga'y rin rin is, just give the people a chance to be heard. And at least from there, or di ba, a chance for the council also, or the city, to explain to the people in detail all the benefits that it can think of that would sway or convince the public why this project is very beautiful for them or this is very beneficial for the future of our children. That's my position now, Your Honor.
Madam Chair.
Councillor Ramon and then your honor.
Just to clarify, is this the 2021 PPP ordinance or the 2016 PPP ordinance?
It's 2021, Madam.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's 2021.
2021.
I'm holding the 2021 also. And I think we have just...
How about in the 2016 PPP ordinance, what does the requirement say about public consultations?
Now, uh, here, uh, in this, in this case, under Section 13, it is very clear that as soon as the selection, the, the selection committee comes out with a report, or, or they ask the mayor for approval, then they come up with a PPP, uh, PPP contract. Here, the PPP contract goes through the council. The contract has to be, uh, the consent of the council is needed for the mayor to sign that PPP contract. And that's what the ordinance says. And I believe the ordinance has to, has to be followed in this case. And again, this is more than the issue of law. This is now the issue of, uh, who we are as a council to the people of Dumagete. So that's my only plea, Your Honor.
Madam Chairman, go ahead, Councillor Ramon.
Thank you. I just want to be clarified, Madam Chairman, because Councillor Arbass is talking about, uh, the PPP contract. Can we have a definition of the PPP contract? Because I believe that the MOU and the PPP contract is not the same, Madam Chairman. Just for clarification.
Yes, Your Honor. Can we go to, uh, first thing, Your Honor, is there is no MOU. There is no MOU in the procedures, PPP procedures. There is no PPP, there is no MOU. It only has PPP contract. So whatever we'll be dealing now, we are dealing with PPP contract. Okay, let's go to the definition of PPP contract.
I believe that's in Section 3Z, the definition.
Yes. The PPP, PPP contract, let's start with PPP. Because PPP is itself also a, uh, the previous provision talks also about PPP as a contract. Then the next paragraph would be talking about defining PPP contract. Nasa, may, obos ba, obos, obos? Obos, obos. Uh, go, please, please scroll down.
Maybe Section 2, ma'am, Section 2Z.
Sige, sige pa, sige pa. Go down, go down. Still, uh, asa naman to?
So definition of terms.
Yes, definition of terms.
I think you can search, ma'am, PPP contract. Not consultation, contract. Uh, is that the 2021?
Section 5. Section 5. Y and Z, Y and Z. Section 5, Y and Z. Please, please scroll down, sir. Okay, there, let's start with Y. Public-private partnership is a legally enforceable contract, so it speaks of an enforceable contract. So PPP by itself is an illegally enforceable contract where each party assumes specific functions. So we go to the, we go to the MOU. Does it mention of specific functions of each party, the city and EM cuerpo? It says yes. It bears certain risks? Yes, it does. Provides contribution or renders some obligation? Yes. Uh, EM cuerpo provides money, city provides the facilities or gives the opportunity for him to be able to start the project. Uh, and how the mechanism works in the, in the, in the project itself? Ang obligation ni EM cuerpo is to build the land. Kita sa city, mo provide niya kalagian, ang city mo provide niya tanakasistas, ang foreigner ipadon sa island. Those are the obligations of the city. And earns benefits, you see the benefits here, pilay share, pilay share is because revenue of the PPP arrangement, there is a revenue. The definition of, the explanation of revenue. No, no, I mean, uh, the revenue of each side. Specifically, there's a form of legally enforceable contract between the city and a PSP in the case, ano eh, si kuwan, si EM cuerpo. And in certain cases, with the, with the requiring, with requiring new investments from PSP. You see, he allows subcontracting. He allows, uh, it, the contract also allows subcontracting ni PSP and transferring key risks to the PSP in which payments are made. Even the mayor said, na akumulugi si PSP, 'yan ang problema. Iba, 'yan ang problema, kumunin ang ikot niyang kantidad na iyang i-invest sa project. Uh, in exchange for performance, for the purpose of delivering a service provided, provided or intended to be provided by the city, PPP shall also include disposition of assets. You see, na dito nakabatang, unsa procedure nga, ang city, una ang title, panginoong sangalan sa state. Then man ang state, pag na buyer, may taker sa Utah, si city i-transfer ang title, panginoong dito sa buyer.
Madam, sorry. Madam Chair, are we discussing about the PPP contract or public-private partnership?
I am trying now to connect, that the PPP contract contains, our JVA contains all the elements of a PPP contract.
And I'm trying, PPP contract is letter Z.
Now, PPP, even Y speaks of, it is itself a contract. If you look at letter Y, a PPP is a legally enforceable contract. The PPP contract is the document itself. Ang ang ilipasabot rin, the PPP, the PPP as a legally enforceable contract, if you read all the elements of the contract under letter Y, our JVA contains all the requisites of a PPP contract. The PPP contract under letter Z is the document itself. So I'm just explaining now that under letter Y, the definition of letter Y, PPP as a contract, the definition itself is found in the JVA. It does not speak of a preliminary acts prior to the contract itself. The, our JVA by itself contains all the elements of the contract of a PPP. Muna ang niyang kunyong nga, when you talk about risk, about obligations of each party in the project itself, the, if I continue, equity assumptions, you see, by the PSP. Okay, proprietary functions of the city, unsa iyang, unsa iyang ang obligasyon. Grant of concessions, the franchises to PSP by the city or usage by the PSP of the public property owned by the city. You see, katung, katung atuan kuwan, katung ancillary businesses. Iba, on our share, ang mo develop sa tong share, atong share, ang mo develop na ang EM cuerpo. Then man taga nagnagbantig, banting ko percento sa kita, sa atong share, niyang i-develop. So you see, the PPP as a contract itself is all found in the JVA. Now let's go to letter Z. Muna ang ipamotana sa, muna ang ipamotana sa last time. When we, when we approve the authority for mayor to sign the JVA, then you, you have all those requirements attached supposedly as integral part of the contract, of the, of the JVA. I asked anybody if we have the attachments, noon wala, what we only have was only the contract. Kana sila tangnan, kada ganan niya. Okay. Okay, now, if we, if we go to the PPP contract itself, the document itself, whenever appropriate, the PPP contract shall contain the preambulatory clauses and whereas clauses, we have that. The party clause, we have that, the party, which is being EM cuerpo and the city. Rules of interpretation, we also have that. Interpretation of the contract, nature of the PPP.
Madam Chair.
Councillor Ramon is recognized.
Yes, I'm asking Councillor Arbass the definition of PPP because, because he is insisting the MOU, which we approve, is also the PPP.
Your Honor.
Supposed to be, his answer would be letter Z, but he focused on letter Y.
Can we have the city legal officer here? I think Councillor Sagarbaria requested his presence this morning.
Your, Your Honor.
I second to that, Madam Chair.
If I may, Your Honor.
Yes, Madam Chair.
If we indeed want the council to be properly advised, Your Honor, whether or not the JVA is indeed a PPP contract, I suggest we bring in somebody more objective, Your Honor, because Attorney Arbon was the one who drafted probably or made, or reviewed, even endorsed to the honorable mayor, that contract itself. Or even the one, the person who endorsed it to this council for approval. Whatever he will say now will be a bias to the contract. He will be in favor of the contract as a, as a, an MOU. If we want the council to be properly advised objectively, let's get somebody nga makatabang dun sa council. At least malinawan ang council unsa guy atong inyo action karoon.
Councillor Perdizas is recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if we allow Councillor Arbass to continue, he was already stating section Z, which is titled PPP contract. Because a lot of what is there, I find in the MOU. Meaning to say, like, performance indicators, insurance requirements, delay provisions, force majeure, all of these are there in the MOU itself.
Madam Chair.
Regulatory regimes, a lot of this are contained. That's why I, I see the point of Councillor Arbass. Madam Chair, thank you.
Yes, Councillor Bandal.
Yes.
Sagarbaria and then Lentorio.
Madam Chair, I see the point of Councillor Arbass. That is precisely why we need Councillor Arbon to hear and say something because if, uh, following Councillor Arbass, uh, premise that it was Councillor Arbon who prepared, Attorney Arbon who prepared the contract, then Councillor, Attorney Arbon would be able to answer why, uh, the, uh, matters or the items just read by Councillor Arbass appears in the MOU. Point.
Councillor Lentorio.
Um, I yield to Councillor Bandal, Madam Chair.
It does not necessarily mean that they would argue on this, Madam Chair. My point in asking Councillor Arbon to, huh? Attorney Arbon to, uh, say his piece, Madam Chair, is so that we would just know why he precisely placed that provision here where in the theory of Councillor Arbass, it would appear that it is already the PPP, uh, contract. That's just my, because Councillor Arbon would be the best person to answer that, Madam Chair, because he was the one, uh, selected by Councillor Arbass, who prepared the contract.
I actually recognized earlier Sagarbaria and then Lentorio.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I have, uh, this is exactly what's said with Councillor Bandal, I completely agree. Um, the best person who can actually give for me insight to this contract is the one who made it. So he can discuss to us what is really in, in the contract. And if, if he clearly says right here, right now, in front of me that there will be no more contract after this, then it is clear it is the PPP contract. Or if he will say there will be a contract, a PPP contract after this, then it is a completely different animal. That's my understanding, Madam Chair. So it was, I prefer money to come here.
Okay, Lentorio, Erames, Ramon and then Perdizas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that note, Madam Chair, um, Councillor Arbass is telling us that there are certain provisions in the memorandum of understanding which appears to be, um, provisions that should be found on the PPP contract. However, it must be noted, Madam Chair, that the MOU that we previously approved, granting the authority to mayor, is just a mere resolution. Whereas the PPP contract shall be passed, um, in a form of an ordinance.
Okay, I'll, I'll recognize Councillor Arbass. Let me just recognize Erames first, Ramon, Perdizas, and then we go back to Arbass. Councillor Erames, you have the floor.
Madam Chair.
Erames has the floor.
Madam Chair, I suggest that we all look at the PRA guidelines. Uh, based on my understanding, uh, an MOU between the city and cuerpo is not actually required sa, um, PRA guidelines. Ang MOU, unyan na na siya, latter part na na siya, then appeal po, kana sa MOU. Appeal po ng PRA na EM cuerpo and the city. So what we are talking about is really a PPP contract. Let's not just delve on the title of the contract, we have to look at its contents. May mo siyang tanaw, maayok, laro man na nga, PPP mang yud na siya. And as to the suggestion of, um, Councillor Sagarbaria, nga si Attorney Arbon atong pangutanon, sin siya may gagamaan na, I'm sure he will defend his stand nga, dili na siya, MOU na na siya, dili na siya PPP contract. And that would also be a conflict of interest on his part considering that he is part of the PPP committee. That's just my point, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councillor Ramon.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Is it not proper that Councillor, oh, sorry, Attorney Arbon, our city legal officer, we will hear from him, Madam Chairman, considering that he is the representative of the city government and is the one, uh, drafting this particular document, Madam Chairman? Can we have the floor for Attorney Manuel Arbon?
Is that the motion?
Let's move.
Second.
There is a motion to recognize Councillor Arbon, Julie seconded. Objections?
Um, Madam Chair, which, there are, you still have a list of people who want to talk before, uh...
Yes, we, we can rule on the motion first and then we recognize Attorney Arbon later. If ever the motion is passed, then we can recognize Attorney Arbon after Councillor Perdizas and then Arbass. Objections?
I object, Madam Chair.
There is an objection, so we need to put this into a vote. For those who are in favor, kindly raise your right hand. Secretariat, what's the count?
Six in favor to the motion, Madam Chair.
For those who oppose, please do the same. You're opposing, Councillor Amores?
Because Attorney Lucidas, uh, counting is six. Maybe we are seven? Six?
Madam Chairman, with the manifestation of, uh, Councillor Amores says, uh, vote of yes, uh, the current count, Madam Chair, is seven voted in favor of the motion. And, uh, three in opposition, uh, Madam Chair, but I think, uh, one councillor is present virtually, Ma'am Bernice Anne Elmaco. We need to determine her vote, Madam Chair.
Councillor Elmaco, can you hear us?
I can call her Madam Chair.
Can you ask her to show her face while voting? Can you ask her to show her face while voting? Anyhow, how many affirmative votes?
We have seven affirmative vote, Madam Chairman.
And three opposition. So even if Councillor Elmaco votes, then it wouldn't change the decision?
I cannot contact her, Madam Chair. She's not answering her result.
Okay, considering that there are seven affirmative votes, then the chair declares that the motion is carried. Attorney Arbon will speak after Councillor Perdizas and Arbas. Go ahead, Councillor Perdizas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, maybe this also can be addressed by our city legal counsel. I am not a lawyer, but, so, when I try to judge something, I try to look at it the way the saying goes, no? If it feels like an apple, smells like an apple, tastes like an apple, then I suppose it must be an apple. So, in the same sense, if the MEU looks like a PPP contract, reads like a PPP contract, and binds us like a PPP contract, then I would say it must be a PPP contract, no matter what name it goes by. That is my only suggestion to my colleagues. Not any Tom Deaconary will say, if it looks like, you know, it looks like an apple, tastes like an apple, feels like an apple, smells like an apple, I'm pretty sure it is an apple.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Arbas, go ahead.
I'll give way to Attorney Arbon, Your Honor, so that we can proceed.
Attorney Arbon, you have the floor.
Mayong Hapon, once again, Your Honors. So the question is, can ibang MOU maobani ang PPP contract? And I had said already, Madam Chair, that it is not. It is true that, and I also said this when I was called twice in this plenary, that a number of the contents indicated in the definition of the PPP contract may be found in the MOU. But the MOU is not the PPP contract referred to here. Because, can we take a look at the MOU, please, Madam Chair, 9.3? Yes, this particular provision, Madam Chair, says that kung dilig madayon, kadili i-grants sa PRA ang permit. Wala na siya, wala'y bilining ang agreement or ka ning MOU, Madam Chair. But in the contract, it's different, because in the contract, siguro naman ka ang anahay reclamation permit. Musulod na ta og kontrata once na anay reclamation permit. Kaya otherwise, og kani ato itreat as the PPP contract. Awkward kaysa paminawan, Madam Chair, na og idinay day sa PRA, mawala ra po din ng PPP contract if we treated this as the PPP contract. Precisely, we are saying na dilig gud ni siya maoh ang PPP contract. Because, also, sa atuang definitions of PPP contract, Madam Chair, na ay mga items din nga nawala sa MOU, mga risk assessment, imanana risk assignments, mga allocations, and these are better dealt with in a contract. So, going to the question of Councillor Sagabaria, ka ning MOU that was endorsed or approved by this council last week, mona bani ang end all and be all of the contract? The answer is no. Once the PRA grants the permit, then we go through the PPP contract drafting. The terms and conditions will go through again through this body, and then you can have another round of consultation. And then eventually, once approved, it will be in the form of an ordinance. This is not in the form of an ordinance. Thank you.
Councillor Perdizas, and then Arbas, Erames.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney Arbon, so, but you would agree, Attorney Arbon, that a lot of the provisions already contained in the MEU will be part of the, what you call, will be the PPP contract?
I would not be surprised, sir. There could be a number of those contents in the MOU that could also be transported also in the PPP contract if the council so desires later on in the terms and conditions. Because, like I said, nothing is written in stone as far as the sharing is concerned. I have been repeating that. If the PRA says na dilig namo ay sharing, then dilig namo. Now, if we treat this as the PPP contract already, which says na na munia ang proposal, then mo conflict na tasap PRA.
Okay. Do you see any harm in the council and even in the city administration, meaning the executive department, to already present to the people this MOU for their review, for their study, for their information? Prior to going into it, I mean, is it harmful? Is it something that, something that, because we are putting ourselves in certain obligation. So, for you, is it harmful? Is it illegal? Is it something bad? If we practice for transparency reasons that we put this MOU to the people at this stage?
Let me put it this way, Madam Chair. I look at you all as representatives of the people. So each one of you carries several voices, thousands of voices of the people. You speak for the people. When you stand up, when you vote here, the presumption is that you speak and stand up and vote for the people, in the name of the people. So, when you say, would it do harm if we consult the people? Well, wala masiguri mawala na, Mr. Chair, if our point is to inform them more. But that's why we were saying that in the PPP contract drafting proper, which will pass again through your council, there will be consultation. At that time, there will be greater details. But if now, bisan pag wala patay, insaktug kay mga detalye, then magconduct a consultation, okay ramasiguro na. But we should not tell the people that this is the PPP contract. Let us not confuse them with that. But if just for purposes of talking about this, the project itself as a concept, I don't see any harm, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair.
So we're in agreement. You don't see any harm. And second, you said you see us here as representing thousands of our fellow Dumagueteenians. Two weeks ago, that was the first question I asked each and every one of my colleagues. How many have they consulted? And apparently, same as me, few to none. And you just said you see us as the representative of the people. Do you also see in us our responsibility to get, to have talked to the people about the MOU? Two weeks ago, it was still the MOA draft, MOA slash JVA. You yourself said we carry the voices of thousands, but apparently, two weeks ago, we carried, I carried only a few voices, because only a few I have shared the contract with. So, being a former member of this august body yourself, being a former representative of the people of Dumaguete yourself, don't you think, or don't you feel, for our dilemma because of our responsibility, that before we give a go signal to anything this big? Because I don't like the people saying already, so, will the council go back to the people every time there is a no? No, it doesn't have to be every time. There are issues that, you know, you can gauge right away what is the sentiment. But this one, isn't it, for your, in your personal analysis, something that we should do before we give the go signal? Anyway, what's, weeks or even months, for as long as what we bring into this chamber, august chamber, is truly the voice of a thousand?
Madam Chair, I do not wish to decide on this, because I do not obviously have that power. But this is all I can say, Madam Chair. On my way to a meeting, I rode a pedi cab this afternoon. And when I alighted from the pedicab, the cab driver said, Attorney, pasuk madayon ng reclamation project? I didn't ask him. And I asked him why. In siya, maayok kay na siya. Samong ilang grupo, pabor sila. Now, I would assume that in your own circles, probably you have also heard negative things about the reclamation, which is perfectly okay. But I would assume, however, that that goes with the territory as elected officials of the city. Probably you had already went around, called people, texted them, vibered them, and then asked them about it, not necessarily face to face. But yes, at the end of the day, you as the elected people, representatives of the people, will have to call the shots as far as the matters presented before you. But transparency, I think that's what the mayor also said. You want transparency? Yeah. Wala problema.
Last, Madam Chair. That's why, to be frank, most of what I did in social media, because I guess, you know, when you have friends in social media, you kinda think alike. So the sharing that personally, most that I get, most comments that I see, are of the supak against. As a councillor of the city of Dumaguete, I feel it is also my need to be aware of what is the other side of the coin. Those who are in favor, those who want this. And unless we conduct proper consultation, I will forever be hearing the negative side. I will have a hard time hearing the positive side. That's why, if we, if my colleagues feel, yeah, you know, if I keep on hearing one side, what about the other? It is not, it doesn't, doesn't give me all the information I need to come up with with what I feel will be a decision for the benefit of the city as a whole. That's why, if we do public consultation before we even go to the DNR, to the PRA, I would even insist that all members of the city council, wherever their personal stand is, but there being a public official, should attend, whether it was arranged by the no's or whether it was arranged by the yes. And I will ask the no's, and hopefully, somebody will ask the yes, whoever's closer to the yes. If there is such a thing as a yes and no now, that invite all of us to your gatherings. We may not talk. We might just attend to listen, so that we are also thought of what the people say. That's why, like I said, never in my mind did it come na, this project should be stopped here and now. No, because I do not, though I'm only hearing, well, two weeks ago, I started hearing the negative. I haven't heard the positive, not so much, except for some people. Also, Facebook friends are fighting for the approval of this project. But, you know, it's not balanced out. And for me, what is important for each and every councillor is to get a balance on this. That's why, whether, in the end, we will not agree whether this is the PPP contract. But you say you have a point, this is not a PPP contract, because things are that. But like I said, if it looks like, smells like, tastes like, or that, it might not be the PPP contract. But for me, that's already it. They might add some things, but basically, all obligations will remain. So, from the MOU, the PPP contract can have more details, but I think no details will be taken out from this, because this is already an agreement between two parties. So since it's an agreement between two parties, I just feel, let's, let's present it now. And I hope the mayor understands my personal position and my political position on this. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Manny.
Welcome. Councillor Arbas?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I wish I could ask more from Attorney Arbon. Maybe just, I'd just like to express my own position in this matter, Your Honor, my final statement on this. Chapter 2, Section 8, does not talk about MOU. It talks about JVA, it talks about PPP partnership, it talks about PPP contract, which requires an authority coming from the council in the form of a resolution. So, we can argue a lot of things on the PPP ordinance, but that's what the section also says. Now, between interpretations of two provisions, Your Honor, one may say it's an MOU that can be submitted to the national office, or it's a PPP contract that has to be, that has to pass through public consultation. I believe the interpretation, Your Honor, is not about which comes first and which comes last. It's a question of what is best for the people at this point. When people are clamoring for consultation, why do we insist on granting the honorable mayor the authority to sign the MOU and to have it submitted and to process it with PRA? When the first step is actually easy, simple. It's not to talk to the people. That's what the people are asking. We're not saying that we're totally against, probably we're totally against it, because it's environment issue, it's an environment issue. But in the end, probably, all the people in Dumaguete, whether they're in favor or not, should be listened to. So, mga akulang ani karoon, we are at this junction now, whether to reconsider our action before or not. Kung wala ni kadali ng, wala ni kadali ng, ah, ordering ka ning action to PRA, naarani siya diya po next week, naarani siya this month. Probably, if it has been processed and developed in two years, probably, two months from now, it is still there. Because this is an opportunity for a businessman. It's also an opportunity on the part of the city. So why not give the people at least a day to consider or to be consulted? If it does not harm on the side of the government to lose this project when it was being cooked for two years, why not give the people at least a week or a year, a month, to absorb the provisions of the contract and to understand the benefits and the negative things that this project can bring? Wala na akong angyura. And I hope the members of the council, as already expressed by Attorney Arbon, in the end, this is our accountability to the people of Dumaguete, because we represent the people of Dumaguete. If we all feel that consultation is an important aspect of our action today, I plead to the members of the council to set aside first the authority and to give this a chance. It's everyone's peace also. If we will push this, push for, or to deny the reconsideration, never expect that everything will be fine after this. If you feel that you're being bashed, if we feel that we are being maligned, whether it's you or us, kamupod, malayod po ni po sa those who are in favor. Kamugin, malayod po mo sa mga those who are in opposition. If we want this to continue... If we want this to continue, then we proceed.
To allow it because I don't think we can allow ourselves by a mere motion that for this matter, we will, ano, we will extend the one-week rule and make it two weeks. I think we will have to change our internal rules so that it be allowed.
Councillor Bandal and then Lentorio.
Yes, under our... That's why, Madam Chair, if I ask my colleagues, if we can be lenient at this time, Madam Chair, I understand the concern of Councillor Perdizas that if we want it permanent, we should amend our rules, Madam Chair. But if everybody is in agreement that we can temporarily be relaxed on our rules, Madam Chair, I think that can be allowed, Madam Chair.
Councillor Lentorio.
On that note, Madam Chair, considering the comment of Councillor Perdizas, he made mention that we cannot tackle it in the next session day considering that our rules provides that we have to tackle it on the next succeeding session. However, in our rules, Madam Chair, what I believe is the intention of Section 46, Paragraph A, is basically to recount the period on which to call for a motion for reconsideration. But it is silent on the manner of how we deal with it or it does not tell us that we have to decide it immediately in the next... In the session that is being referred to by Section 46. So probably, I'm not sure, Madam Chair, though, but based on that section, it is indeed silent on whether or not we could decide on it the next session or karoon bagyo. So, I believe we have to decide on the matter, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may.
Councillor Perdizas and then Urbas.
Madam Chair, I agree, no? That is another point of view. Like, you hear it from the Sangguniang Palilawigan, when do you actually act on something? When you take it up again, is that already an action? Now, the question on coming up with the final decision on the action, does it also mean that it should be done on that day? Is it possible it could be done next week? But the rule, you abide by the rule because the motion was taken up on time but deferred final action on the motion. But that was, okay. I'm in agreement with that. There are two trends of thoughts. But there's another point. If we defer, we are also saying the good mayor will not use that authority from today up to next Wednesday. Because if he uses that authority that he has, up to now, he has, he hasn't used it, but he has it. If he uses it, muten academic, our deliberation, our discussion, our final conclusion on the motion. You see, I mean, we are saying mayor will not use it that connection.
I understand. I understand the sentiment of Councillor Perdizas. He is just trying to make sure that from this point until we act on the matter, there should be no action on the part of the executive. I cannot speak in behalf of the executive. However, this forum, this discussion, would tell us that the executive should not act on it yet. If he does, and basically, that is a clear taint of bad faith now because there is a pending action before this council. You get the point. You know for a fact, this forum, the executive should take cognizance of the forum that is being held by this Sangguniang Palingsod.
Just with your indulgence, I don't want to pass. I don't want to pass the blame to... If he decides to act on it, I don't want to say that the mayor acted in bad faith because as it stands now, he has the authority given by us. So if he uses it, I don't think it is in bad faith because he has full authority. Whether we're still talking about it or not, that's our cargo. He can always say, "There was no bad faith. Why didn't you withdraw it? You had the chance. Why did you delay, delay? So I used it."
Okay, Mr. I'm sorry.
So that's one thing. I don't want to pass it to the mayor.
All right. Before I recognize Councillor Urbas and Sagarbaria, I would just, the chair would like to ask the secretariat, were we able to give the mayor a copy of the resolution of authority and then resolution of no objection and the other authority that we gave him?
Yeah, by practice, Your Honor, we are going to serve a copy to the chief executive just right after this session because it is just this morning that our minutes has been approved by this August chamber.
Now, if there is a pending motion for reconsideration, will you be giving a copy to the executive? If there's a pending motion for reconsideration? I guess not, correct?
I think, Madam Chair, if the mayor will ask a copy or a certification, then we are duty bound to give it because as of now, authority is actually available for him.
Councillor Urbas is ready.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Councillor Attorney Urbas, no nga, katong nungun siyang naay, it might be... What we granted mayor was actually the PPP contract. No, but if we check out the MOU, namagoy nakabutang po dito nga, iclarify nga, it is not actually the PPP contract. I think it's 6.2.3. Check to ba? Upon the issuance of the reclamation permit and the notice to proceed by the PRA, the city and the PSP shall enter into a PPP contract to be approved by the Sangguniang Palingsod pursuant to the PPP ordinance of the city. No, so personally for me, it would seem absurd, no nga, if you would consider this as the PPP contract but at the same time, under 6.2.3, napuy nakabutang po nga PPP contract. I know, Madam Chair, nga taas pagidka'y atong kanalan nga, tokion on kabayan ani sa mga provisions. That is why, with due respect, on taga, takong icontinue ni siya during sa next regular session for the interest of everybody, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other comments? Councillor Sagarbaria.
Thank you. I am in line with Councillor Bandal. I don't think the executive would immediately sign or do any contract. And I want to continue discussion even in next regular session. Pero if my colleagues here are afraid that we will block them, which we will not do, then I don't see that... I believe there is no more discussions to be made. So, with that, Madam Chair, I move to divide the house.
Okay, there is a motion to divide the house on the pending motion? The pending motion of Councillor Urbas. Is that the motion, Councillor Sagarbaria?
Of Councillor Urbas.
Kindly state the motion of Councillor Urbas, Madam Chair.
Kindly recite your motion, Councillor Urbas.
It's a motion for reconsideration to authorize the authority granted to the honorable mayor to sign the MOU in the previous session, Your Honor.
Okay, and the effect of this, if ever granted, is that the motion, I mean, the authority will be withdrawn?
The authority is withdrawn, Your Honor, is withdrawn.
No, no. So after the granting of motion for reconsideration, there will be no more discussion? And we don't need to vote?
You can pass it next session, Your Honor, or a week after. It depends on the council, Your Honor. It's just that for now, we're asking for the withdrawal of that authority.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we all agree the effect of a particular motion for reconsideration because it's not clear in our internal rules. So the effect is that the authority is deemed withdrawn. Okay, there's a pending motion for reconsideration on the authority given to the honorable mayor to sign the MOU. Any second?
Second.
Okay, Julie seconded. Objections? Objection to the motion for reconsideration, which has the effect of withdrawing the authority of the honorable mayor? There's none?
Wait minute. There's any posi... No, no. There...
There was a motion to divide the house, but of course, we have to go back to the main motion.
Precisely.
Yes, but if there's... Yeah, we can presume that there's an objection if there's a motion to divide the house. But the chair would just like to be clarified if there's really an objection.
I object, Madam Chair.
Okay, there is an objection from Councillor Ramon. Because if there's no objection, then there's no need to divide the house. The chair will just rule. Okay? Okay, so I hope... Okay, so there's an objection. That's why we have to divide the house now. Okay, we all agree to that, right? Okay, so for those who are in favor of the motion for reconsideration with the effect of withdrawing the authority of the honorable mayor to sign the MOU, kindly raise your hand.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Councillor Elmako is also on the line and she wishes to vote in affirmative.
Is she online right now?
She's not online because she's having trouble connecting with our online...
Can you phone touch her so we can hear her vote?
Anyways, Madam Chair, anyways, she would be... Her vote regardless of whether she would precisely manifest it is still in the affirmative, Madam Chair.
She's already on...
She's on the phone right now.
Is she registered as present in this afternoon session?
Yes, she was present earlier.
She's present. What's your vote, Councillor Elmako?
It's a yes to withdraw the authority given to the mayor, Madam Chair.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
One minute recess, for right. No, no, the objection of Lani is motioning jokin. The objection of Councillor Ramon is to the motion of Councillor Urbas and not to the motion of Councillor Sagarbaria, correct? So there's no problem. Councillor Sagarbaria just manifested that he wants to put the matter into a vote already. Okay, so we are now in the main motion. The motion is to reconsider the authority granted to the honorable mayor with the effect that it will be deemed withdrawn. Okay, it was seconded. There were objections. So the chair asked the members of this body to raise their hands so that we would know who are in favor of the motion. How many are in favor, Mr. Secretary?
Please include Councillor Elmako. She manifested her vote earlier.
We have five voted in favor, Madam Chair.
Okay, for those who oppose, kindly raise your hands.
Come again, ma'am.
One, two, three, four, five. Motion is...
Madam Chair, we have six members voted in opposition to the motion.
There are five in the affirmative and six in the negative, correct? Kindly clarify. Okay. There are six members in the... In this body who voted in the negative and five in the affirmative. Hence, the chair declares that the motion is denied.
Please do adjourn, Your Honor.
There is a motion to adjourn.
Other matters? Madam Chairman, just one, ano? One point, Madam Chairman. Other matters?
You go ahead. I will allow that.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to move, Madam Chairman, that this particular document, Madam Khaidem, would be part of the records, department records of this chamber, the document that I have read during the privilege hour, Madam Chairman, with regards to the DNR approval signed by then-Secretary Dr. Angel Alcalá. It's a motion. Is a move?
Second.
There is a motion to put the document as part of the records of this council. Julie seconded. Any objections? There being none, motion is carried. There is a pending motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, the session is now adjourned.
Again, please be reminded that this video does not reflect on any opinion from the DC team and is only published for information purposes. Thank you for watching. Subscribe to our channel and click on the notification bell so you won't miss any of our upcoming videos.